To the September 8, 2025 meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education. We are going to, Mr. Cordell, could you open us in a prayer?
Sure. Sure. Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day, another day to enjoy the beauty of your creation. Father, we thank you for the rain that you sent to water the earth. Father, I thank you for this team. I thank you for what we represent. I pray for wisdom and the sermon, Lord, as we make decisions that affect our county, our children, our teachers, our staff, whatever. And Father, I thank you for this team that we have. I thank you, Father, for the administration, for our director, for our teachers, for all that serve in this county, bus drivers and whoever. I just pray that, Lord, that you would bless them and give us traveling safety. And Father, that you would give us insight into what you want us to accomplish in this meeting. This is I pray in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We don't have any, no public comment, so. All right, so we have, our student ambassadors tonight are Jones Wagner, so wave, okay, and Christian Galindo. All right, thanks for being here and serving tonight, and you picked the wrong board meeting to come to, so I hope you weren't planning on getting home in time for dinner. All right, no public comment, so we're going to start off with the principals' report. So am I getting an echo? Okay. Push that back a little bit, so we can start with the principals' report. So who would like to lead off?
Yeah, ladies first.
Yeah, you guys always make Leah go first.
This month at Deerfield, we had our basketball tryouts, and we have enough for boys and girls' team and lots of cheerleaders, so we were excited to have enough kids to participate on both teams this year. And we had a grandparents' breakfast last Thursday, had a lot of people turn out for that. And upcoming events, we have fall pictures, we have picnic on the grounds, and that's where the families come out and we all go out on the grounds and have food. And I just want to share one thing with you about art. I was walking through the class the other day, walking through the school, and I wandered in the art room, and I was looking to see what they did, and I asked one of the little girls, her name's Amelia Skelton, I asked her mother if I could use her name tonight, and she said absolutely. And I said, Amelia, are you enjoying art? And without missing a beat what she was doing, because it's her first day with paint, she said, yeah, love it. Glad to add it. Want to let y'all know that it makes a difference, and the kids really appreciate that, so.
Right.
Good afternoon. Good to see you all. It is homecoming week at CCMS, so we've got a lot of things happening this week at school. Today was Marvel Monday, so kids dressed up as their favorite character, Marvel character, any character that they chose. Tomorrow night is our big game against EO Kaufman. Now, something to note, our game has been pushed back to seven tomorrow night because they are coming from quite a ways and can't get a bus to get them here on time, so we did push that game back to 7:00 PM tomorrow night. Raider colors tomorrow. Wednesday is Wacky Wednesday. Our girls' soccer team has a game against Telahoma that's home on Wednesday. Thursday is Throwback Thursday. Volleyball is going to be playing North Franklin home Thursday night. Friday is Friendship Friday, and so, and then we're going to also end the week with our first intramural sport activity going on this year, so we're going to try it through our house system. So we're doing kickball games this Friday and next Friday, and so I think that's going to be a lot of fun for the kids. Had a great turnout for parent-teacher conferences. Our first benchmark assessment that we'll use to measure student progress is happening September 22 through the 26th. And then the Friday before break is our Raider Fest, and that's a big event for the kids. They love that. Parent volunteers are needed for that, so if any of y'all want to volunteer, that's great, but we'll be running games and different events for the kids on that day. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Parsley. And I did skip over Ms. Cotton, so we'll get to her after the principal, so sorry about that.
We have a lengthy report this evening from our student ambassadors, but I still want to share just a couple of things with you. You know, we're not too far removed from Coffee Pot Week, where we have a game, as well as other activities going on. This is homecoming week, and so it's an interesting week at school. You know, we try to focus on learning, educating our students, but at the same time, we have all sorts of fundraisers going on in the building. And, you know, we have Homecoming Day. We try to make that sort of a carnival-like atmosphere. And again, our ambassadors will talk about this week a little bit, but I want you guys to be aware that we're, we have a new event that we're going to start this year, and basically our career in technical support organizations, several of those, a lot of the community may not know much about. And so we are having a career in technical support organization and club showcase this fall. It'll be right at the end of September, so it's a few weeks away, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30 in our Raider Commons that evening. And so sponsors for those organizations, as well as students that are a part of those organizations, will be present, and we're inviting the community in, just so they can learn about those career in technical support organizations, as well as our clubs.
What's the date on that again?
I believe it is September 30.
Okay.
I'm fairly certain that's accurate. Again, our student ambassadors have lots of information to share tonight, and I think I'm going to let them share the rest with you in just a few moments.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Ms. Cotton, going to come up and give us a report on the, we are recognizing her efforts on the school lunch program, is she going to give us an update here?
Well, tonight, I wanted to recognize our summer feeding program, volunteers and employees, and they can come forward. This summer, we fed Seven Fridays, and we did summer school as well the month of June, which was Monday through Thursday. But then on Fridays, for Seven Fridays, June and July, come on up, we fed students from two to four, and when I say we fed students, we fed families from two to four. We had cars lined up all over the middle school. I even had to have Jimmy Anderson come up with a traffic plan for us, because we had so many people out there. And we had volunteers, you should be up here, too, Jennifer.
I'd rather recognize y'all, but thank you.
Yes, she came out and helped several times, and her children. We had some children that helped. It was a wonderful experience. We not only worked hard, but had a lot of fun. This group right here, they worked, it didn't matter if there was thunderstorms that day, and we had, you know, 100 cars lined up, they stayed out there and did it. Heat, it was in the 90s some days when we worked it, and they worked it. I came several, I came every time but twice, but they did an outstanding job. And some of these are just their kids and their volunteers. So to say they take their Friday and come out and be that dedicated to their community to make sure kids eat, I think that's something to be respected. And to give you an idea of how many we fed, in June, we fed around 52,000 meals, and that was lunch and breakfast combined. July, 84,000 meals, and a grand total of 137,000 meals were fed to these. Outstanding. These were seven-day packs, so, you know, if you hand out food for seven days to families, that is a lot of preparation. So, I mean, not only did they spend that day handing it out, but they spent the whole week packing bags, frozen bags, refrigerated bags, milk bags, you name it, they did it. I mean, it was incredible to see how many people we'd have lined up. We had assembly lines all over, out there in the middle school cafeteria, and I just can't say enough. But tonight, I want to really take this time to recognize the two managers of this summer feeding program, and that is Kelly Arnold and Jessica Popance. They. I'll put a ticket for them. They worked tirelessly, I can't even tell you the hours they worked. We went to conference, and it was at the end of June, and they came back from conference after we were in Gatlinburg for, what, three days? And we got to, they let us go to Gat, they let us go to Dollywood that night. They came back and were there, ready to go the next day, worn out, exhausted, three hours of sleep, and there they were, ready to get these bags ready and get them out to all these kids. So Jessica, this is to recognize you and Kelly. I think these people are not always recognized, the ones that are behind the scenes, making everything happen, and I want to thank everybody here. We could not have done it without them, and to say that we served that many meals is incredible.
That's awesome. That's incredible, yeah.
Yes. So.
Can we get a picture?
Yes. Don't leave yet, because.
Here, let me get a picture.
Do you want to do names? I'll let everybody say their name, and we'll go through.
Okay.
I'm Donna.
And she works, some of these are employees, just say if you're.
I work at Hillsboro Elementary, and I did the summer program.
Monica Stone, the cafeteria manager for the middle school.
I'm paid, Popance, and this one sucks.
Alex.
Alex Stone, he's my.
That one's us.
I'm Veronica Young, I'm a student at the middle school.
Christina Ernett, Norah K. Hickerson, elementary.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I just go everywhere with them. She's awesome.
Just long for the fun.
And this is just part of them. I mean, Jennifer, you tell you, we had a large group and.
It was one of the most beautiful things I have ever seen. Like, I'm just so, and all of y'all, and so proud of you for how hard you worked, and it was just, I don't have anything but just amazing things to say about you all.
Me, too.
Yes, my babies went to work, yes, they did.
They were good, they were good workers.
Thank you. It was a blessing to them to be a part of it, so I'm thankful.
Well, special thanks to Kelly and Jessica, too, for all the work they did and the prep work they did. They started in, what, April, probably, and we started on menus and worked on it well ahead of time to get this started, and we tweaked it, tweaked it, and tweaked it.
The vegetables that go in a bag is very hard.
Yes, yes. For seven days, you think seven days of breakfast and lunch, that's a lot of food.
It was good stuff, too. There was one week my kids got tired of me not bringing any home for them, so we brought them home, and we still have some. They love it. It was really, really good stuff, and they'll say, hey, can I eat for breakfast or something from the free thing? I was like, yeah, it's fine, so they love it. It was great.
Yes. Well, I want to get a picture.
Yeah.
If you bring them over here, we'll get a picture, you three, and then we'll get a group picture, if that's okay. All right. I'll photo them off. Y'all smile big. All right. Okay, Rick, you guys just have to bunch together.
Did you want pictures, Matthew, or?
No. You can just leave.
Okay, got it, all right. Just wanted, didn't want them to leave before you got a chance to.
All right, let's make sure I get everybody, black shirt, green shirt. You guys are going to have to pull, squeeze in. All right, all right, here we go. Got you. Thank you.
Yeah, before I go, I just want to give a quick update on CEP, just so you know where we are. Since we just completed August, I came up with the meals served this August compared to last August. So breakfast in the month of August, last year, we had 26,870 meals. This time, this August, we had 33,711, which is an increase of 6,834 breakfast. Lunch, last year, we had 56,850. This year, we had 602,800, so we had an increase of 5,950. So that's pretty good. So we are seeing an uptick in meals, which is exciting to me to think that many more kids are eating.
Full bellies.
Yeah.
The word's got out, it's not a bad place to eat, huh?
Yeah. So for free, it's a great place. But I just wanted to give you that update, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Now we move on with the call for intent, and so we have, first item on the agenda is our consent agenda. So everybody, if I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Ballard.
Oh.
On Budget Amendment 18, at the bottom, that should read Budget Amendment Update instead of Final.
Okay.
He's on the.
Budget Update Final. Yeah, sorry.
He's on the consent items right now, but I don't think.
Well, that's approving the agenda, too, so, yeah. So Budget 18 is Budget, oh, Budget Update Final, okay. Okay. With that changed, then can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Officer, we have an email to be answered.
Oh, did I?
I sent the email.
Right.
The one about the.
Oh, so we need to, yes, we need to add that on, and that was, there was an email to everybody on that, so, and is that in our packet, too?
It's not in your packet, it was in some that's.
It was in our email.
Okay.
She sent us our email last week, wasn't it?
You need it.
All right. Did anybody need to see that? So.
I've got a copy of it.
So are you going to make a motion?
All right, so with that, with those additions, or those changes and additions?
I make a motion to accept the item that.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Henshaw. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. This is Henshaw. And any discussion on that? Any other further changes? All right, let's start with Mr. Gilli. Mr. Cordell. Oh, he left, oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, Ms. Henshaw, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes 8 to 0. All right, so, so there's normally what the first thing we do in September is have the chairman election, but by policy, if there's anything to do with the director's contract, that has to be number one on the agenda. So we need to discuss the director's, a change to the director's contract having to do with the schedule he's on, and Ms. Melson, you wanted to fill us in on that? The.
So this.
The contract is in your agenda here?
I think we talked about it in the work session, but this is just to clean up his vacation and holidays. So I think the only really difference in there should be, he should receive 10 holidays and 20 vacation days. That was the only, I think, difference, because he's on the 261 calendar, that'll clean up his day, that will clean up the correct days that the previous director was on, on that same calendar.
And the, the change is highlighted in the, it's Item A1, the director's contract, so on page three of eight, the change is highlighted there in pink, I guess that is. You said pink to me. So we're just changing to 20 vacation annual day leaves per year, and that's the only change, right?
It should be, the only change in there should be, the change is vacation days to 20.
Yeah. So that's just being consistent, so, so I need a motion to approve that change, and then we can discuss it.
I so move.
Ms. Jones, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon, okay. So the motion is to approve the revision to the director's contract, changing his vacation and leave days per year, as indicated in the highlighted portion attached to the agenda. So any discussion? No discussion? Okay, Mr. Cordell, you are back.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Cordell.
He said aye.
Aye, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Ms. Henshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes 9 to 0. Okay, now, we dig out this script here. It's crazy how quickly your papers up here multiply. Okay, so the next agenda item is the election of chair. The chair will now accept nomination, I got a script here, I'm working off of.
Mr. Chairman, I think you actually have to turn it over to.
Oh, Mr. Argro.
The director, then he does the chair, then he'll turn it back to whoever pretends to chair.
Mr. Argro, then.
I get to read it.
Yeah, you can read the script.
The chair will now, the chair will now accept nomination for board chairman for the 24, 25, 26 school year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Tom Ballard.
Do I have a motion that nominations cease?
You got any further nominations?
Do I have a motion that nominations cease and that this individual will be elected by acclamation?
I so move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Henshaw?
We need, any discussion? Vote.
Ms. Henshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
And I guess I'll, I'll vote for us, make it 9 to 0. Okay, so do I carry on from here, then?
At this time, I'll transfer the duties of the chair to the 25, 26 chairman of the Coffee County Board of Education.
Good, Tom.
Thank you very much for your confidence in me. Okay, at this time, we will accept nominations for board vice chairman for the 25, 26 school year. Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Frida Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Cordell.
I will nominate Robert Gilli, because Robert knows Robert's rules, unlike any other Robert.
Okay.
Oh, Lord.
And, all right, any further nominations? All right. Do I have a motion that nominations cease? Oh, wait, so do I have a motion that nominations cease and we vote for one of the two individuals?
I so move.
I'll second.
Ms. Henshaw, Mr. Cordell. Okay, so I guess what we do is, we're just, we just do a vote, and then we just tally the votes, right? So you either vote, each board member either votes for Frida or Robert, right?
What I would do is, is, yes, just call roll like you've done before.
Right.
And let them say either Ms. Jones or Mr. Gilli, and then tally that and decide who wins.
Okay. All right.
I'll start.
What's that?
I'll start.
Okay. Then Mr. Gilli.
Frida Jones.
Okay. Mr. Cordell?
Frida Jones.
Ms. Henshaw?
Frida Jones.
Mr. Henshaw?
Frida Jones.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Robert Gilli.
I can see why.
I pass.
Ms. Hodge? Okay. Ms. Hodge?
Frida Jones.
Okay. Ms. Matthews?
Frida Jones.
Mr. Coon?
Frida Jones.
All right, and I will vote for Frida also, so that passes 8 to, well, 8 to 0 with one abstaining, I guess.
Yeah, Frida.
All right, congratulations, Frida. Back on the, got the same team again, so.
It's a good team.
I think that takes care of that agenda item, so the next one is going to take a little while to get through, is the special committee assignments, and did you want to?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we do away with the committees, and like I said, there's, I think we brought this up before, as well as, there's not very many districts around us that even have committees anymore, and I'd like to at least see how everybody feels about it, and, because we, seems like to me, we waste a lot of time with having a committee meeting. We have a committee meeting, then we come back and we vote on it, and if we just had a work session, maybe, and did everything at the work session, and then maybe vote on it then, instead of having so many different meetings, to see what everybody else, what their thoughts was on it.
So we have a motion for Mr. Henshaw to do away with committees. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon, seconds. Okay. Any discussion?
Sounds like, go ahead.
No, ladies first.
Ladies first.
I understand where you're coming from, however, I don't think I have time for that many work sessions. I understand the purpose of the committees being split up. I do see what you mean. There is absolutely no way I can come to a work session instead of a committee meeting all the time. They're already so long.
I have to admit, that's my main concern, is when we do a work session, they go on forever and ever, and the committee meetings, we can usually keep down to an hour, an hour and a half, and that's the advantage of them.
Ms. Gilli?
Ms. Chair, we, these committees are beyond help for our process. I put my faith in a lot of the committees that I, that I'm not a part of. I put my faith that my fellow board members bring the best option to board meetings to maximize everyone's time and ability to conduct the business we're supposed to. These committees cover a lot of ground and a lot of territory during their time that we don't have to in work sessions, we don't have to in board meetings. We're presented the facts that majority has nine times out of 10 agreed on beforehand. Ultimately, of any committee or anything, we only have the action as a full board to take action. You know, that's, it's just like I've heard before in the policy committees and things of that nature. The policy committee brings to the table what the majority has agreed on in the policy committee, but it's always been this board's right to pull a policy and rediscuss it, or change it, or whatever, as a board, because everything ultimately stops with this board. It just, there's too much to do and too much territory to travel. We would be having full work sessions and/or board meetings every single week. And then you throw nine different views of board members that make the decisions, all in that, during that meeting, you're still going to get it at the board meeting as well. Now, a lot of times, we've seen that, but I just, I don't feel that's, I don't feel that's a wise decision, although it's perfect, I mean, it can be done.
I don't know about y'all, but I enjoy my committees that I've chosen to be a part of. I like. I like going to those and it being a group of people that were interested in that particular subject. There are some, some things I really would not like to be on those committees, so, I enjoy that it is kind of personalized to each of us and what we feel like we bring to the table.
I have a question. Um, when we say do away with committees, are we talking about doing away with all of them, or a portion of them, or?
I think there's some committees we ought to keep, like the safety committee and things like that, you know, there's some that you can't do away with.
Yeah.
But, by, by policy, we can't have standing committees, so this is why we do this every year, is we have to, um, reconstitute the committees every year, so there are no standing committees, but, you know, that's just a point of clarification there, but there's some committees that we really need to have, so, so, I think that's kind of, you know, with, Mr. Hanser, I think understands that too, right? So, yeah, so.
So, like, could we have a list of the ones that we, we wouldn't do away with, or that we would keep, so we will kind of know? Or is, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
I, you know, I don't know, maybe...
Well, the STAC, you definitely, that isn't MOU, so you have to have that one. Uh, safety and ethics, you would have to keep that one because that's confidential information, that would not be...
Safety and ethics, law says you have to have an ethics on hand.
I kind of feel like these committees have come up over the years out of a necessity, um, and if there's not a necessity, the committees won't meet, so, it's kind of, as long as they're needed, they'll meet, if they're not needed, they won't meet. So, they kind of take care of themselves in that.
Safety and security you have to have, and you're not gonna hear everything, even this board is not, that is discussed in those.
Really, any other ones that are absolutely required?
I believe our policy states the policy committee has to.
Maybe we should go down the line and say what's important and what's not. In my opinion, we definitely need a budget committee, we definitely need a capital projects committee, uh, to maybe summarize or come to some conclusions before we come to the full board. Of course, the full board makes the decisions, but like you said, not every board member can, can be in a, on a work sessions every time for certain things. But there's some things on here that I feel like that are really important, that school board members are involved in, in upfront, uh, prior to voting on.
Committees don't set the rule, this board does. Committees bring the recommendation.
Right.
Some, some of these committees are actually not really the board, the board is on the committee just to see what's going on, it's not, they're not really part of the committee other than to see what's taking place, such as calendar committee. You're gonna, we bring in all of our educators from each school, but basically, the two that's on the, on there for the board, is they're just to see what's taking place.
Oversight.
Basically, whenever it comes back, then you have an idea of what's going on. Uh, textbook committee, once again, really, the board's not the, the committee, it's, it's the teachers, and then somebody's there just kind of seeing what's taking place.
The oversight, and then they can come to the meeting, and in discussion, if a motion is made, those two board members can voice, I was there, I heard it, I seen, this is what I know of why it happened.
You know, like, I don't recall, I'm on, uh, see, I'm on the calendar committee, I don't recall going to even that meeting.
No, no, I, I actually just wasn't able to make it to any of those, unfortunately, but if I'm not mistaken, like, we wouldn't have had any, uh, say-so at all in that calendar anyway, right?
That is correct, until you got, it is brought actually to the board.
Right, just to vote on what was recommended.
But you were, but, but you were invited to come and
Yes.
and see what, the full process, and, and received all the emails that everybody received.
Right, but we wouldn't have had any input in the decision, except voting as a board.
Correct.
In that committee meeting, yeah.
But, for instance, we could, we could have said, you know, I'm just using the example, we could have suggested that we coordinate our calendar with city schools, I mean, is that something the board member could suggest on a committee like that?
Oh, you could, you could definitely suggest something.
So, what I'm saying, that's, that would be the, we wouldn't be making decisions, but you could suggest something.
Yes, you could definitely suggest that, and that's the reason why you're, you're on that committee.
Yeah.
Looking at the committees, my whole thing about it is, a lot of these committees, the, the salary, the, the capital projects, we've had issues where something's been brought to the full board, and it's been sent back to the committee for, because of questions, whereas, if that was covered in a work session, you can ask your questions then, 'cause a work session's for discussion, and, you know, board meetings to, to vote on it and approve, and, you know, that eliminates the discussion happening at the board meetings. That's the way I look, you know, I look at the, the committees, you know, some of these committees are nothing more than represent, representation, you know, to, like, say, the calendar committee, the textbook, you know, but your committees that are really involved, that's where you're, you, you know, you're, I feel like you're wasting time, because you have the committee meeting, it comes to the board, the board has questions, goes back to the committee meeting, you're delaying projects, you can delay projects for months.
Maybe instead of going back to the committee meeting, go back to a work session, instead of, you know, the committee, committee's already worked on, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So then, if it comes to questions, then it could go back to a work session for the whole board to, instead of going back to the committee. I see what you're saying.
Ms. Chair?
But I will say this, I'm on the, I've been on the board a while, and I do think that the board is more involved and knows more about what's going on in the school system by having these committees, 'cause if we do away with all those committees, we're not gonna be up to date on a lot of, lot of incidental things that are occurring, and, uh, but I, I see what, I see what you're saying, Mr. Coon, about going back and forth to the committee. I think once the committee meets, and you, we give our, the committee gives a recommendation, if it doesn't work out with the board, it goes to a work session, instead of back, 'cause the, the board's the one that needs to make the final.
The full board's at work session.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Mr. Gilli?
There, there is no rule that says it has to go back to committee. See, that was, I, I want to use a couple of weeks ago as an example, there was a policy, I wasn't here at the meeting, but there was a policy that came before, and it got shot back to committee. It didn't have to. When it was pulled out of the main general consent and put as an agenda item, that's this board's decision. Change it however you want and move on. It doesn't have to go back to committee. And I, and I have seen that, I'll, I'll agree with Mrs. Coon, time and time again, things get sent back to committee, they don't have to.
Right.
When it's pulled out of consent, or it's an agenda item, hash it out. Move on with it. You have that ability, even with whatever the policy committee or any other committee brings before this board, if there's something in there you don't like, fix it right then. We don't have to have more meetings and push back to committee, it doesn't have to automatically go back to committee just 'cause there's a question.
I think that's probably where most of the concern is, is it just constantly getting kicked back to committee?
Yeah.
And it's just never-ending.
Yeah.
I don't like it when the policies get shot back. We're the board, handle it then.
Yeah.
Oh, we're fixing to do that later in the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, do we want to vote on, so the motion is to, um, not have any committees other than what is, what is necessary? Is that the correct motion?
I think, I think the motion was to do away with all committees, and the board do all the wor, or did in board meetings or work sessions, period. I think that was the motion, because we can't, we can't...
I'll change that.
Can you?
I'll change that.
We can't vote, we can't vote without a list of what committees we're voting on, to know what we're shutting down and what we're not.
Well, a lot of these committees are gonna exist anyway, whether the board members are on them or not, 'cause they're, you know, I mean, uh, the Anti-Drug Coalition Committee, you know, the Calendar Committee, a lot of these things.
Yeah, I think that's the next agenda item, if you don't want to be on one, then don't.
So, so you want to restate your motion, then?
Yeah, I can. Ms. Chair, I'd like to change my motion to withdraw, uh, of all the committees to the committees that are just needed, uh, per the TSBA or school board.
Mr. Coon, do, you seconded, so, are you okay with that?
I'll agree.
Okay, all right, so, we're gonna vote on doing away with the...
Mr. Balleridge, you might need to figure out which are your
Exactly.
committees you're keeping, and which ones...
Because none of them are a part of TSBA or the
Right.
school board.
Right, not, there, there are no standing committees, so, we're gonna have to go through this list and define which ones we want to keep and which ones we want to remove. Is really the only way to do that.
It could be stated per state law or Coffee County Board of Education policy.
All right, so, if everybody's agreeable, we can go through the list and define which, which is which?
Could we do a, a vote to see if anyone's interested in talking about this before we do it?
We have to appoint those today, I think.
I know, but could we?
You have to fill them, or change names, or whatever, and then you can disband whatever when we figure out which ones, because you're gonna have to pull a law, and you're gonna have to pull a policy. That's the only two things that dictate which ones we have to or we don't. TSBA don't dictate what we have.
Can we make a motion to see if anyone is interested in possibly doing what the...
We already technically have a motion on the floor.
Okay, help me, we have a motion on the floor, how would we?
I think she's saying do them vote and then figure out what needs to, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, before we make this big motion to vote specifically on this, to see if anyone's even interested in what the action of the motion is to take anything away, because if none of us, if we all want to stay on committees, there's no point in going through all this and voting for it, in my opinion.
Ms. Chair, I think you're gonna have to handle this motion on the floor, then I think you're going to have to move on to agenda item number two, fill these positions, and then at the next meeting, an agenda item to disband whatever we've been provided that we have to by law or not, if that's what they want to do.
Well, the motion that's on the floor will require us to go through and define which committees are essential and which aren't, so...
We'll handle this motion on the floor and see how the vote turns.
All right.
I think.
I, I'm okay with that, so, we can, eh, proceed with that motion? Any further discussion? We can go into a vote, and that would probably address what you're saying.
I was just trying to keep it simple, that's all.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine, that was probably the best way to do it, so, um, so, the motion is to do away with non-essential committees, Mr., did I, Mr. Hanser, I think,
No.
Oh, wait, so...
So, yeah, we need to make sure they understand the way they're voting.
Yeah, so you're voting, so, the motion is to, to, um...
Do away with.
Do away with.
Do away with.
So, an aye vote, so a yes vote would be to do away with.
Okay, so, yes.
Okay, Mr. Hanser, is a yes? Ms. Jones?
It's to do away with non-essential committees?
This is confusing.
Well, yeah, committees that aren't required.
And how, and how are we gonna determine which ones, after, after this vote?
Well, you don't know.
We're gonna determine which one are non-essential?
Yes, yes.
Is, is that all the motion said? I thought I heard in the motion it had to be per TSBA and Board of Education.
Well, that is, yeah.
The motion is to do away with committees as needed per TSBA and our school board.
But there are no mandated TSBA or school board?
I know, but...
Okay.
There's Coffee County Board of Education policy.
Does he want to resc, the motion?
Let, let me just rescind this motion until we, because I think pretty much everybody's in agreement that they want to keep the, the policy, the committees, is the way that I'm understanding this, kind of, so that we can save us, like Jennifer said, some time here. I would just wanting to, you know, my biggest thing is, we had, we've had some committees that, we, we made decisions in committees, and we, and what the committee recommended, we got to the board and we didn't even go by it.
That's, that's, that's democracy, that's...
Well, yeah, there is no guarantee, you know, that's, that's true. So, it's a recommendation.
So, that's what I'm saying, what's the need in having committees if we don't even go by what the committee...
If you don't get what you want, I can see that being an issue, but it's still nine board members that decide the fate of everything.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I would go.
Okay, Mr. Hanser withdraws his motion, um, do...
I'll agree.
Okay, and, then, do we need, we don't need to vote then on whether we want to keep committees or not at this point, so, okay.
It was not a bad idea, Mr. Hanser.
Yes.
It's not a bad idea.
It was a discussion.
Yes.
All right.
Some of these aren't actually committees anyway, you know, like TSBA, you're delegate or you're not, that's not really
Right.
you know, you don't meet as a committee, you just show up down there at the TSBA conference.
Like I said, we're, we're about the only one that even has committees around us, on the school boards, so it's just an idea.
We need to look into that, so, all right, well, with that said, let's move on, um, 'cause this meeting is gonna be long as it is, is, uh, do our...
Mr. Ballard? Mr. Ballard?
Oh.
I don't know, and, and our policy will dictate, just for clarity, I, I'm not sure our TSBA requires districts or boards of educations to have any committees.
They don't.
Um, moving forward, we, we need to figure out what are essentials, uh, boards are to help us function as a, as a team, as a unit, but it's my belief, and I look at our policy as well, it's my belief that the TSBA doesn't require committees, but...
Well, our, our own policy, um, committees are allowed, but not required.
Required.
Yeah.
Wait, but you still, you still have to, like, your ethics committee, you have a policy, trust me.
Correct.
You have a policy
Yes, sir.
of the path in which grievances and ethics complaints go, forwarded to the ethics committee.
Our policy, yes, sir.
Mandatory step before full board.
Some of our policies will mandate those committees.
Several of them, and/or law.
So, maybe what we do is, at a, not the fall retreat, but a subsequent work session, we go through all these committees, and then we then go through and decide whether we want to continue on with them or not, or what their purpose is, and
I'll agree with that.
and go with that, 'cause it might, that might be a better forum to discuss these things, because we're not gonna discuss that tonight, get out of here before midnight, so...
Ms. Chair, somebody said it earlier, if you don't think somebody needs to be on committee, just nobody gets on the committee, then it just, you don't have to worry about it. I, I don't know who said that, but if you don't think that there's a need for that committee, just nobody...
I think that was Mr. Gilli, but I think Mr. Hanser's concern was that, that a committee will make a recommendation, and the board doesn't adopt that recommendation, so, and that's...
That's fine, I just thought
Yeah.
but if nobody's on it, then there's no committee
Yeah.
that y'all have to be on with it.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the same as the director making a recommendation and we don't go by it.
Yep.
So, like he says, it's democracy. Like he says, it's democracy. Maybe we need to call in board representatives, you know, maybe have, cut it down to where it's not so many, but we're right. Still think we need representatives.
But I, I would say maybe for the next work session, that might be a, a good thing to go through and look at what all these committees are and what they do.
I agree, well, I'll try to go through them and see, but like, there's a pre-K one on here. I believe by the grant, they got that money, that it has to have somebody, is what I was told when I first did it. So, some of them there's...
They are mandatory.
There are reasons why.
According to grants and different rules, okay.
As to why that is.
So, even though our policy is we don't have standing committees, sometimes we got to have, that's why we got to reconstitute them every year, but they need to be in existence because of some grant requirements, some other policy or something like that requires, like the Ethics Committee, you know, like the textbook, yeah, okay, okay, got it.
So, that's to my knowledge, I mean, that was just when I took it.
Well, it might be nice for clarification, you know, so we know what, what these are as, like the next work session, so. And that way we can hash it out, because we're probably not going to do that tonight, so. All right, so with that said, let's, let's bang through these and see who... Jennifer, do you want to continue on the, the Anti-Drug Coalition Committee?
Yes, please.
Okay. Budget Committee is currently Mr. Gillery, Mr. Hanser, Mr. Cordell, and Ms. Jones.
I won't off.
Mr. Gillie wants off the Budget Committee. Do we have anybody else who wants to be on that? It's exciting. Okay.
I will be.
Mr. Coon?
I think you will be great at that.
Yeah, Mr. Coon, okay. Mr. Coon, Mr. Hanser, Mr. Cordell, and Ms. Jones on the Budget Committee. Calendar Committee, that's one of these things where we're just basically representing, we have currently Ms. Matthews and Ms. Jones. Do you two want to continue?
I will step off if somebody else wants it.
I will too, and, and if you don't think it's necessary for that committee.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, we can make suggestions, but we don't have any vote or say-so in what they decide. I don't know. Somebody else wants it?
You still got to approve that calendar, though.
Yes, well, the full board does.
Full board approves a calendar, so. So...
That could be one that we do away with.
Cut out all the breaks and extend summer.
You want to delete it now?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, yes, no, yeah. All right, pull that one off. Capital Projects Committee, Mr. Hanser, Mr. Gillie, Mr. Coon, and Ms. Jones.
I would like to stay.
I'd like, I'd like to stay.
I'll stay.
I'll stay.
Okay, and four is the maximum allowed on any committee, so anybody feel like they're being left out of the Capital Projects Committee? All right. I know Holly really wanted to be on that one.
They can handle it.
I think Jennifer would, it's sad that she's not on it.
No, I'm not, I'm not, thank you, though.
All right. Director's Evaluation Committee, this is going to require some work this year because we do need to get a Director's Evaluation Form whipped into shape. We got the first year covered with TSBA, but, but going forward, we, our current form is kind of a mess, so. So, there's going to be some meetings of the Director's Evaluation Committee currently, that is Jones, Hanser, Cordell, and myself. I would be willing to step off if somebody wanted to do that.
You're still Board Chairman.
Yes, so you'll still be on it.
I'll still be on it anyway, that's, that's right, so. Well, never, never mind, so.
We think you should stay.
You gotta be here, you may as well.
I'll stay, yeah, as long as I got to be here, so. So, to Ms. Jones, Mr. Hanser, Mr. Cordell, do you want to step off that one? Anybody? Okay, anybody else want to be on that?
If somebody wants it, I'll, and I'll step out.
What's that?
I said I will step off of that one if anybody wants my place, if not, I'll be glad to stay.
Anybody else want to be on it? Okay, and Ethics Committee, Mr. Gillie and Ms. Hodge?
I would like to stay, please.
Okay, and, uh, FRC Advisory Council, what the heck is that?
Grand Resource, Grand Resource Center.
Okay, I think I ask that every year, so my fourth year running, asking what that is, but...
And that might be something that's not actually a committee, but mandated that a board member's be on it, do you know?
I don't know, I don't know. That's a good question.
Have y'all ever met?
No.
No, we've, we've tried, but...
If she had a grant or something that mandated it, but, so I need, I'll check on that and see if it's a grant.
I'm okay with staying on it if we keep it, but...
I would be okay with deleting it as long as we could, you know, every once in a while get a report, you know, presented to the board on it, I mean...
We just want to know what's going on.
Is that something that you give a report on?
No.
I mean, is there probably a kind of report, like if we have any grants, they're in my name to report?
Well, we can, we can scratch it and, you know, if it's not required, I'd be fine with that.
I mean, I think it's, it would be good if the board could be aware of the things that that, that FRC is doing out in the community and for our families.
If the director does his job, you should know about a lot of the items that we're discussing.
Okay. That's the only thing I can think of, is that we would just like to be aware of what kinds of things we're doing and, you know.
Scratch that?
Our Director, Hebron Advisors.
Okay, Mental Health Committee, that's Ms. Hodge.
I would like to stay, please.
Okay.
Ms. Garner, I like to spend all my time with you.
Okay. Pre-K Community Advisory Council Representative, and I think that's probably...
That's the one I think isn't...
Okay, and are we required to have a board member on there?
Yeah. We'll find out.
Okay.
The pre-K has a council that meets yearly, Volunteer Pre-K does. Sometimes board members are able to show up for that in a previous life for me, and sometimes they were not. Sometimes the director of school was, was present, sometimes it was a representative. A lot of that has to do with availabilities, stakeholders as well, that included parents as part of that group as well, so.
So, Ms. Yench is currently the representative, so do you want to stay on that?
Um, I'd be fine to stay on it, but I need to be informed a little more when there are meetings because I met with Jonah one, she does such a great job that it's like...
And, and those meetings are yearly, so?
Yeah, I met with her one time a year, so I don't mind continuing if we need it.
She's had some hard, so we'll say that might not even be one that we have to keep.
Policy Committee, Ms. Yench, Mr. Cordell, Mr. Gillie, and Ms. Jones. Everybody want to stay on there? Anybody else want to get on there?
Oh, no, Robert keeps that so fun, I wouldn't want to step off of that one.
I will give, I will give my spot up.
No, you can't.
Sorry, you can't.
Somebody else takes it.
Yeah.
Your chair?
See, look, Kelvin don't want me on there.
No, I didn't say that. But you can, he can give it up, and somebody else can take him, be chair.
Robert's got to stay. Kelvin didn't want me on there, that might get me elected again, I don't know.
I will say one thing, having gone to a few of those, Mr. Gillie keeps it moving right along, so.
He does.
I appreciate that.
Keeps it moving.
All right, um, so are we okay with that, same group of people?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, great. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Safety and Security, Ms. Matthews, Mr. Gillie, and Ms. Hodge.
I'd like to stay.
I would like to stay.
I'd like to stay, too.
Okay, that is an important committee, so, absolutely. Oh, and the Salary Employee Compensation Committee, currently Ms. Matthews, Mr. Hanser, Ms. Yench, and Ms. Jones. Oh, you're on a lot of committees.
I know, and I can get off this.
We just got you on every one.
I'll stay.
Okay, Mr. Hanser wants to stay? Ms. Matthews?
I, I will give my spot to somebody else if they want it. That's a very tough committee. Anybody that wants it, please.
I feel the same way.
Yes.
Now, that was the toughest committee I was on.
It absolutely is.
Okay. Does anybody else want to be on the Salary Committee?
I wouldn't mind being on it.
Okay, we will...
He can take my spot.
Okay.
Me?
We will change Ms. Matthews for Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Hanser, you okay with staying on that? Okay, Ms. Yench? And Ms. Jones?
I'd be glad to give my seat up for somebody else.
Anybody else want to be on that one?
Not being in the outfield throwing peanuts.
No, ma'am.
I think you're stuck for that.
Frida, you're so good.
That doesn't mean you got to show up. And we don't have to have four board members, you know, if you wanted to drop off, that's fine, too, so.
I'm sorry, I missed, is somebody dropping off one that I missed?
Well, uh, Mr. Coon is taking Ms. Matthews' spot on the Salary Committee, and Frida said she would give up her spot, but nobody wanted...
So, it's nobody dropping off, though?
No.
Except for Matthews.
Okay, School Health Advisory Council Representative.
I would love to stay, please.
Okay. Sick Bank, or Sick Leave Bank Trustees, Mr. Cordell, and somehow I ended up on that committee, I don't know, but...
I'm okay with staying on that one.
Okay, I'll stay, I guess, I don't think they've ever met, so, I know.
Yeah, we've met once a year.
Okay, then I missed the meetings.
I've had it twice.
Tennessee Legislative Network Representative, that is currently Ms. Jones, that is one person, so...
I can't give that up, somebody else can have it.
I'd be willing to take that, so. Just dealing with Mr. Brickin and Ms. Bowlin.
You can have them.
So, on this pre-K Community Advisory Council, let's just keep it because we think that it's for a grant.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Yench will still be on that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Textbook Adoption Review Committee, Mr. Cordell?
I want to step off of that one.
Okay, anybody else want to be on there? It's really, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's one you could probably scratch, too, because we don't really have any say, because the final textbook selection comes to the board for approval anyway, so.
I agree. I was on that committee once, and it's really not useful for, for a board member to be on it, really.
That's true.
So, let's just scratch that. All right, TSBA Board of Distinction Committee. I'm on there, Mr. Coon, Mr. Gillie, and I guess an alternate is Ms. Hodge. I'd be willing to step off of that.
Me, too.
Oh, no, I wouldn't, I think all we have to do is answer questions to know if you're a Board of Distinction. It's how many, how many people have been here for a certain percentage of the time, and do we have this? It's just a checklist.
So, do we have to have a committee for that?
So, I wouldn't think that we have to have a check, a committee for that.
Whoever fills that out, make it look good.
Okay.
And I think it was established the time we, we applied for it, and that we had a committee, you know, and now that we kind of know what we're doing.
I mean, because you just, I mean, I have to answer what it is, whether it, you know, I have to be truthful.
Yeah, make it look good.
Okay, let's scratch that one then. TSBA Delegates Committee, and that's really representatives at the delegates meeting at TSBA Annual Convention, right?
Yes.
Okay, so currently we have Mr. Hanser, Mr. Coon, and Ms. Matthews. You want to continue doing that?
I'll stay on that unless someone else wants it.
I'll stay.
All right.
I'll stay.
Needs an extra day at the convention, but, all right, keep that the same. All right, a, a new committee, and I did send out an email, is the Innovation Committee. So, let me explain that just real quick a little bit, so. This is going to be, and I'm assuming chaired by Mr. Hargrove because he's going to have to guide us a little bit on what we can do and what we can't. But there's two purposes, really, to this committee. One is to look at, to research and recommend innovative ways to improve student outcomes that we can take back and, and, you know, like, like the wise King Solomon once said, there's nothing new under the sun, so probably somewhere out there, maybe in Minnesota or North Dakota or Oregon, somebody's doing something that we might want to do, and so we can research that and, and look at that or come up with stuff on our own. And two, and we'll talk about this at the fall retreat, is innovation grants to teachers to, and we got to figure out how we're going to set that up, how we're going to fund it, to set aside some money for innovation grants to teachers to run pilot programs in classroom, and Mr. Hargrove and I have talked about that a little bit. And the Innovation Committee would, would look at, come up with a form for submitting for in-house grants and then really review those and award those out to deserving teachers and running a pilot program, and if it works, then we can roll out to the school system, so. So, it's just kind of a way to kind of think outside the box on things, you know, and, and so this would be board members plus admin, and then Beth had also suggested that maybe at some point you want to bring in, you know, a community member or something, too. So, it's kind of really, you know, thinking outside the box a little bit, so, so.
Do other systems have these committees?
Probably not.
No, but I, I would appreciate the collaboration, I would, and people that maybe think a little differently about how we do our business daily, and somebody's already shared an article with me on innovation group, so.
I'd love to see even our businessmen in the community get involved because they've got some great ideas that we could bring into the school system as well.
Sure. Very much so.
So, who would like to be on this committee? I know Beth does, Mr. Cordell does. We can have two others. I was going to think of outside the box here.
Well, one of them will have prekey because Board Chairman is, is heading it up, so.
Okay.
And then, of course, we have Ms. Cole, Ms. Sizmore, and Ms. Garner will be on there as a couple.
So, we can have one more board member, yeah, so.
I don't know what it is, but I'll do it, because I do think outside the box, and they may not like that.
That's what we want. We know you think outside the box. That's great, so, all right, so.
You know, I...
Ms. Jones. So, Ms. Yench, Mr. Cordell, myself, and Ms. Jones. All right, the After-School Excellence Program, currently Ms. Matthews, Ms. Yench, Mr. Coon, and Ms. Hodge. And I think that this is really a program that, once again, we're going to want to expand, and I know Mr. Hargrove has a little bit of a vision of a three-tier program, and Ms. Garner to also. And so, we're going to want to look at how we're going to fund that, maybe make a commitment, and so there's going to be some work on this committee, so, to get that program and whip it into shape, so.
Ms. Tanya and I talk daily. Just a matter of putting some things together and then sharing with the committee.
So, Ms. Matthews, you want to stay on that one?
What's that? I'm sorry.
The After-School.
The Excellence, the After-School?
I'm good with staying on it unless someone else wants it, and I'll step off.
Okay.
Totally, I, I'm free to step off. If nobody else wants it, I'll stay.
Okay. Well, I think you provide a lot of insights last time, so.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Yench?
I'd like to stay on it.
Okay, Mr. Coon?
Yeah, I'd stay on it.
Okay, and Ms. Hodge?
I would like to stay. I've been talking to the excellence people and hearing their thoughts, so.
And I'm kind of, you know, I think Mr. Hargrove will give us, give us some, and Ms. Garner will give us some updates on that, but I'm kind of excited to see what possibilities are, so. And the last one is a new committee is the C-Tech. So, we signed the memorandum of understanding, and we need to have one board member, one board member representing. And you're going to have to go...
Thursday will be Thursday at 3:30, so.
3:30 here, it will last one hour.
Okay.
This week? When did you say?
Uh, Thursday.
This week?
This Thursday?
Oh.
So, it will be between, it will have a representative from each school, I think three, or two or three from the high school, two from the middle school, and they will be here in... two from the middle school, and they will be here and talk when Mr. Hargrove got the things that are concerned to those schools.
Our teacher group will be a brand-new group too, so this will be the first time we've collectively worked together as a unit, so.
This Thursday, 3:30?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need one representative, so, I see Jennifer.
There's no way I can make that, I hope you missed it.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Hanser? Okay, Mr. Hanser? Practicing, no. All right, I think that that is the list of special committees, I think we need to have a motion to accept.
Do you want me to read them back, make sure they're all?
Okay.
If you forget my name, I'm perfectly fine.
I think we added yours in at a few places.
So on to the, on the anti-dread coalition, it's gonna stay the same, it's Jennifer Peacock-Hodge.
Right.
Budget Committee, Chris Kuhn, Scott Hanser, Gary Cordell, Frida Jones.
Correct.
Calendar Committee, we're gonna delete, Capital Projects Committee is gonna stay the same as Scott Hanser, Robert Gilly, Chris Kuhn, Frida Jones, Director Evaluation Committee is gonna stay the same, Frida Jones, Scott Hanser, Gary Cordell, Thomas Fowler, Ethics is gonna stay the same, Robert Gilly, Jennifer Pe- uh, Peacock-Hodge. FRC Advisory Council, did we hear this? Okay, so on that one, we were gonna delete if it's not a grant.
Okay.
Mental Health Committee, it's Jennifer Peacock-Hodge, Prepay Advisory, Beth Hinch, that's for a grant, Policy Committee, Board of Representatives is all the same, Beth Hinch, Gary Cordell, Robert Gilly, Frida Jones, Safety and Security is gonna be the same, Holly Matthews, Robert Gilly, Jennifer Peacock-Hodge, Salary Employee Compensation, Chris Kuhn, Scott Hanser, Beth Hinch, Frida Jones, School Health Advisory is gonna be the same, Jennifer Peacock-Hodge, Sick Leave Bank Trustees is gonna be the same, Gary Cordell and Thomas Fowler, Tennessee Legislative Network Representative is going to be Ms. Frida Jones.
No, I think we changed that to me.
Okay, who did that here to?
Me.
Okay. That's what we're reading, right?
Yep.
Okay, Textbook Adoption Committee is gonna delete, the TSB A Board of Distinction Committee is going to delete, the TSB A Delegate Committee is gonna stay the same as Scott Hanser, Chris Kuhn, Holly Matthews, the Innovation Committee is going to be Beth Hinch, Gary Cordell, Thomas Fowler, Frida Jones, After-School Program for Excellence is going to stay the same with Holly Matthews, Beth Hinch, Chris Kuhn, Jennifer Peacock-Hodge, and our C-Tech Representative is going to be Scott.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the, the special committees for 25, 26?
I so move.
Mr. Kuhn? Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Peacock-Hodge, all right, any discussion? Hearing done, uh, let's vote, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes 9-2-0, okay, now we are on to the agenda item for the Raptor bid. So, Mr. Hargrove, I guess you're gonna.
Ms. Tanya?
Yep. We're gonna talk about Raptor.
That looks at a lot. I've, I've gotten it more than once. We discussed in our last work session adopting the, several of the Raptor products from the check-in station, which I have a principal that will share a story here, our phone apps, as well as the beacon and badges for all of our school buildings, several of them already have it now. Ms. Garner has.
Raptor bid for 10 schools for 121,974-40, so, Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
I will vote aye, that passes 9-2-0, all right, next agenda item is the, Mr. Damewood, this is yours, I believe, for the iPads.
These are buying iPads at that price. We haven't bought any big, large set of iPads since the Esser has come by, and these are actually iPads we're replacing that we've had before, and just, you know, eventually we're gonna have to replace all those Esser devices too, so, this is just, and it's from the state contract and all that information's there, so that's what it is.
All right, thank you, so I need a motion to approve the iPad purchase for $97,200. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Gillie?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell? Any discussion for the motion to approve the iPad purchase for $97,200?
It's come out of the technology budget, or?
Yes.
I have a question, do we put any kind of protection on these, like screen, do we put any kind of protection on these, like a screen protector, a case, any of that?
Well, yeah, but that's not gonna be part of this, yeah, we, we did cases.
So we do protect these, okay.
My recommendation.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. All right, so your recommendation says we purchase it, and so, any further discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote, Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell? Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
I will vote aye, that passes 9-2-0, next up we have the Dell Pro Max Slim, basically laptops for the CTE program, and you should have, I'm not s- wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the Dell computers for $34,544.
And I support the purchase as Mr. Damewood will continue on his technology-driven speech.
Uh, these are for, uh, the higher- Uh, these are for, uh, the higher-end computers, uh, Mr. Spears' class lab, and they gotta do AutoCAD and that sort of thing, so that's why they got a little bit of expense to them, and it's just what he wants for his program. It's coming out of the CTE budget. Ms. Nelson could answer any of those type of questions, but that's what it's for.
Okay. And, Ms. Nelson, my understanding is that, uh, Mr. Skipper has the money in his budget, but because it's over twenty-five thousand, it needs board approval, right?
That's right.
Okay. So, all right. So, I need a motion to approve the, uh, CTE laptop computer purchase for thirty-four thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars from, um, Dell Pro, uh, who is this from?
Dell.
From Dell. Okay. Directly from Dell. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Mr. Cordell.
I'll second.
Mr. Gillie. Okay. Any discussion on this? Okay. Let's see. Did I? Did I start with you last time, Ms. Matthews?
You did.
Okay. Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine-two-zero. Okay. The next one up is the, um. This is the, and, Mr. Hargrove, you can lead in on this one.
Um, just for clarity, I wanna read this, 'cause I wanna make sure my language is clear. With respect to the extra pay, I recommend extra pay for all those employees who did not receive the state bonus of two thousand dollars, which will be awarded later this month. To qualify for the two thousand dollar extra pay, an employee must have completed the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and is currently employed by our school system. Coffee County school employees who retired at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year will also receive the extra pay. Employees who began work in our school district after the start of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year will receive two hundred dollars for each month of service through the month of May. After-school part-time employees would receive one thousand dollars in extra pay.
Okay.
Is that excellent employees? Is that what you're referring to?
Okay. And the total budget hit on this?
It's on, it's budget amendment number seven, so eight-hundred, sorry, eight hundred eighteen thousand four forty-three and eight cents.
Okay. Yeah, if we approve this, we, there, there is a budget amendment here. One of the many budget amendments will, we'll include this, so. So, but, uh, we did discuss this at the, uh, at the last work session, so I need a motion to approve the extra pay for employees who did not get the two thousand dollar, I won't say bribe from the state, but.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Okay, Mr.
I will second.
Mr. Cordell. And Ms. Hodge. Any discussion?
I have a question. On the thousand dollars for the excellent workers, does that include the teachers that's in the excellence program, 'cause they already got their.
If they've already received the state bonus, no, sir.
Okay.
So, this is non-faculty excellence?
These are non-certified, and you may have a handful of certified people that did not receive the other two thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions?
But a teacher's assistant that is also an excellence.
Correct.
Employee, what do they receive? Do they get two?
The extra, extra pay. They didn't receive the state money.
Right.
But we're awarding them the extra pay.
Okay. So, what if you've got a teacher's assistant that also works excellence?
It wouldn't be doubled up. It would be just the two thousand.
They would only be two thousand or one thousand amount.
So, the one thousand is just for those that aren't getting the, the two?
No double-dipping.
Gotcha.
And the part, the people that are started this year, they don't get the full amount up front. They'd get the two hundred per month.
No, ma'am. If they started the school year this year, they receive nothing.
Oh, okay.
These are for, the state bonus was for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Actually, it was for the prior, the, that, last year, last school year.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood what you were saying about the two hundred a month. What?
If someone started last September.
Okay, last year.
Instead of August, we hired them a month late.
Oh, okay.
And they're on a ten-month contract, they would fall two hundred dollars short, just because they worked a month less.
Okay. Well, I have to say that, you know, if this is passed, we'll, we'll be setting a record, 'cause I don't know of any other school system that is in, and I hope the employees realize this, that there's not, I don't know of any other school system that is providing that to every employee. It, it was to the teachers and maybe the professional employees, but not.
Yes, ma'am. You'd be correct.
The, I, I was gonna ask, does anyone know if, did Manchester City do this as well, or did they just take what the state provided to the certified?
I'm not sure. No one enough to speak to that. I know there's been some other monies, but I'm not sure when I'm out to comment.
Okay.
Now, if they worked all last year, but they've left our system, then this will not be for them, right?
That is correct. And our school teachers, um, some of our school teachers that have left our district are gonna receive that, but they received it in the state money, not in ours.
Yeah.
Further questions?
What was the total?
Eight hundred eighteen thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents. It'll be budget amendment, amendment number seven when we get there.
Ms. Chairman, I'm glad we're doing this, because we've gotta take care of our team, our people. Bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, whomever, they deserve some compensation on this, in my opinion.
I agree. We're kinda setting a precedent here for everybody else.
That's a good precedent, is that.
A good precedent, yeah. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine-two-zero. We will see this come up again in budget amendment seven, so. All right. Next up, we have the.
Mr., our, when will they get that?
Uh, we'll, we'll sit down and talk. I think our goal right now is prior to Christmas.
December. We, we'll have to get this budget amendment through the county. So, that'll be by November, so we're looking at the December paycheck.
That's a, that's a question that, since, whenever I brought that up as a Christmas bonus, or I've had.
The state money will come into paycheck this month, but then this one will come in December.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda is the, um, uh, athletic lighting improvement bid, and, um.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out on this, this item here with TCA code and the nature of what was required in those bids. One of the business partners of the business that I own has submitted bids to these contractors that all picked up, and I'm going to, uh, step out and step away and let the board handle their business.
Okay.
On that note.
Thank you, Mr. Gillie. You actually just needed a bathroom break, so. All right. So, uh, Mr. Shore.
Mr., um, Mr. Ballard, Chairman, I can't, I, I'm gonna brag on Mr. Shores here. He's worked extremely hard on this, um, spent some time just to make some connections, and it was all in protecting our district and our dollars, and I'm gonna turn it over, uh, to him right now. I appreciate his, his attention to detail and, um, spending some time outside of our workday to find out some things and to be a good steward of our tax dollars.
You ready?
Yep. I am ready. Okay, the, I, I sent a couple of sheets to the, the board, and you see the packet here. The low bidder in this situation was Integration Technology. Uh, they're out of Knoxville, uh, Tennessee, and there was some questions that, that I had, and, and I reached out to them, and what the answer I got, wherever I started to look at it, if you'll look at, um, soccer, soccer at the, um, soccer at the middle school, they gave a bid of thirty-four thousand five hundred and three dollars. And then, if you look at the soccer at Raider Academy, it was thirty-three thousand. Now, this is only for the install and, and the electric and doing all the install with it. If you know those two places, there's a big difference in, in what is needed. At the middle school, there are, are no lights, there are no electric, there's nothing there except for a field. And it's only about fifteen hundred dollars more than at Raider Academy that has electric, the poles, everything set, it's just changing up the fixtures. So, wherever I saw that, something, it just wasn't making sense to me. Then I looked at the soccer compared to the high school baseball and softball, and, well, sorry, the tennis compared to the softball and the baseball at the high school. And if you notice, the tennis courts at Raider Academy was more than the baseball or the softball at the high school, which is gonna require new poles, new electric brand, the complete works, plus removing the poles that's there. So, wherever I started looking at all of it, it, it just, it wasn't making sense, and so, that's where the struggle came in of, uh, Mr. Hargrove and I looking at the, the numbers and coming up with a recommendation. I contacted the, the company and finally heard back from them today, and from my understanding, he said that the gentleman that actually did the paperwork of the bid did not do it by field, but did it by school, and then they tried to, while he was driving down the road, secretary called him, tried to put it in, in reset where the amounts were for the fields. And still, to me, things doesn't, I, I, I'm, I'm just a little, I'm a little concerned. And with those concerns, and, and he assured me that everything would be taken care of. Uh, if we went with them, that, that the, the job would be done, done well. Wherever I talked to CNH, um, or, or got information from them prior to, they had done about eleven or twelve athletic fields over the past three years. Uh, they're also local. They also have a vested interest into our schools, and then wherever I checked with Integrations, they had, they have not done athletic fields as of yet. They have done maintenance, and I'm not saying they can't do the job. I'm just saying, I feel more comfortable with CNH. And that's the reason why, uh, Dr., uh, Mr. Hargrove and I discussed it and decided the recommendation was CNH, because they are local, they do work, have done work for us in the past. When we need them, we can call on them at any time, and CNH has always been really good to work with us and come and, and help us in, in trying to figure out the, the problem and, and take care of it. And so, the, the recommendation is to, to go with CNH on all the fields, and this sheet, if you'll notice, there's two, two bids. The first one is dealing with the bid that we sent out that is on the installation. It's gonna include the electrical, installing poles, installing the electric, doing all the work and so forth. The second bid that's coming up in a little bit is gonna be dealing with the, uh, materials, the, the poles, the lights, the brackets, that type of, of, of material. I was very pleased with the bids that we, we received. I was afraid that the bids was gonna come in quite a bit higher. Uh, the bids, we, we had put, uh, the board had, uh, set aside one point five million about a year and a half ago, uh, to go towards the lights. Uh, the bids, the, the total bids with Integrations came under that, about thirty-six thousand, a little over thirty-six thousand. With CNH, it's a little bit over, which is about fifty-five, fifty-six thousand over. Now, also out of that one point five million, forty-two thousand went to Wold on the engineering of provide, providing the bid documents that we actually put it out to bid, so, so a portion of that one point five has already been used. So, we would need, if, if this board chose to go with CNH, we would need a little bit more money than the, uh, what is left, and, and I didn't actually do that, that ca- calculation, my apology, but, um, it'd be approximately, approximately ninety, ninety-seven, ninety-seven, ninety-eight thousand dollars if we went, because we've already used some of it for the bid documents. And that's, so the recommendation from the director is?
Use our, our local bid, the CNH, uh, contractors.
Okay.
I find a lot of value, and they're vested in our community. They're, they're local, they're dependable, and they've, they've done this type of work before.
All right. So, the director's recommendation is CNH contractors, then?
CNH.
What?
C-N-H.
C-N-H. I thought you said N-N-H, sorry.
Yeah, I think. I might not.
I might have been, heard you wrong. I'm sorry.
Who knows? All right. Um, all right. So, I need a motion to accept the bid from CNH Contractors for a total of four hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Mr. Cordell. Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hodge seconds. Okay. Discussion. For the, uh, to accept the, the motion then is to accept the bid of four hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars from CNH Contractors, Inc. of Manchester, Tennessee, for the athletic fields and lighting improvements. Any discussion?
Um, I, I talked to, um, Kelvin. I really appreciate your work and diligence in this. You know, that's why we have people who look into this stuff, so they could make these recommendations to us, and so, I feel comfortable with the recommendation.
Thank you, Kevin, for your work.
I have a question. What, what was, um, night electric out of Russellville, Kentucky? Were they adding additional things or that, to that seven hundred and thirty-five thousand bid?
When I saw that amount, I didn't call them. I, I didn't, I mean, we, we had two lower bids, so I, I, I didn't call to check, uh.
So, so what they've given you is just this? I mean, you don't have a breakdown of what everybody's doing?
This, this is according to the bid documents, what is required, which is what we paid Wold to provide to us.
Okay.
This is bidding for what was provided to them, that they are to provide to us if they win the bid. So, they, they were all bidding on the same apples-to-apples, if you wanna say.
Okay. So, you're saying that the four hundred, approximately four hundred and forty-eight thousand, we're gonna have to add another ninety to a hundred to that?
Okay. Um, either it or the materials. So, e- either way, it's, it's gonna be one or the other, because ultimately, the, the two goes together, if you think about it. They're two separate things, but if we get somebody to do the job, we have to provide the materials as well. Well, we already have a price for the materials, so when you put those two together, then we would have to, to increase, uh, because we only put a hundred and fifty to some, you know, budgeted a hundred and fifty, if you wanna say, and we used forty, forty-two thousand, uh, for the bid documents, so you take that off that one point five, so yes, we would have to.
So, that would have to be added in any bid we, we got?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. That's after twenty, you did the initial, uh, process, started this in twenty-twenty-three.
I believe that's, I believe that's right.
And those would, and we have the money right now in restricted funds for this, and so that's a budget amendment?
Number nine.
Number nine. Okay.
We will need some additional funds, but, um, we can cover the.
We will need some additional funds, but um we can cover the rest in capital right now. And then we have some other restricted capital if we need to bring that out.
Okay. Further questions?
So the low bidder, we're not gonna take their bid because we recommend it, is that what you're saying, Ms. Hargrove?
The low bid, the 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 numbers that were in question, I mean, the rest of the the companies that bid were were much more similar looking than that. In the research that we did on the company, we just didn't have a lot of it, couldn't find a lot of experience putting in athletic field lights. Little bit of the fear of the unknown. Couldn't find out a lot about them and about a lot of their the their jobs that they perform, so.
And we're not required to take a low bid, right, is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Hargrove? Could I make, could I make a statement, could I make her a vote?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to to bring out, I was just sort of thinking about this situation and um you know, occasionally there are issues with lighting. It 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 wouldn't matter where we get the lighting from, there's an occasional problem. And uh to me, the the fact that one of these companies is local is something that uh and I know you all consider that, but I think the fact that you know, we have ballgames and whatnot uh on a weekly basis, when there are issues, I would much rather have someone just a mile down the road than than have to rely on someone that may be hours and hours away to come and help us.
Yes, I agree.
That that's all I wanted to say.
Well, we kinda made that decision on our demographic study too, we went with somebody local that was not the low bidder too, so there's certainly precedent, so.
And I like the concept. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I like, I like putting back into my own community, these are our schools, these are our people around. And and I like if we can put finances back into our own community, I like that idea, so.
And what I was saying, more or less, this is for the public to realize that Mr. Shores is right about that soccer being at Coff County Middle School, there's a lot of difference between thirty-four thousand and the highest one was ninety-four thousand, so it kinda makes you look really closely at a bid that's that low and wondering if they can follow through with what they're saying, when all the other bids are fifty to six, fifty to forty, well, more than that, fifty thousand more than than that, so, agreed, Mr. Shores.
And Wold is actually the one that prepared the bid packages with all the line items and?
That is correct.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
I'm excited for these lights.
Finally, right?
Yes.
All right, uh, Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, Mr. Gillie is has abstained, so that passes eight to zero, so. All right, next up, we have the Musco bid. And Elvis has entered the building, so.
I agree with always you going local.
Mr. Shores?
I went through all my packets and I have moved my sheet out of. Okay, the the second one is dealing with the actual materials. This is using a Sourcewell, which is a cooperative purchasing that we have talked about before. And as you could tell, this is dealing with materials that are here. And what we would be looking at is the middle school, baseball, softball, soc- soccer. And if you'll see where it says retrofit, now, they messed up on the softball, but retrofit is where the, we keep the poles, we already have the poles, they're just changing out the lights. So softball should say retrofit, they messed up on it, but it is a retrofit. And then soccer is all new. At the high school, baseball and softball is all new, it's gonna be including the poles as well as the the fixtures. Right now, there are um wood poles at the high school for baseball and softball. At Raider Academy, it would be football, be retrofit, and also the soccer retrofit because the poles are in good shape. I think at the football field, we have concrete poles and the soccer is actually the the metal poles. Then for the alternates, it would also include the tennis. He did include the custom colored field lighting. Uh, the discussion that we had at one of our work sessions was if any of these sports uh wanted the custom lighting, then the boosters, their boosters would take care of that custom lighting. So if football decided they wanted the custom lighting, then their football's boosters would take care of it. If baseball or softball wanted the custom lighting, then their boosters would take care of it. And that would be on them. So it's everything here except for uh the custom colored field lighting. And if you will notice, for the football field, it is the um the better light or the stronger candlelight, I think it's the fifty candlelight. Uh, for the football field, yes, uh, the the fifty fa- uh foot candles. Uh, so this is the materials.
Mr. Chair, I scrolled to the bottom of this, and I do wanna disclose there is absolutely no relation affiliation.
Okay.
I would not have thought, I would have seen my last name anywhere else.
Trust me, I've had to call this guy several times, so. He uh, hi- his name is Greg Gillie, and he is the representative, and he did show up at one of our work sessions and uh and talked with the 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 board members that were on the Capitol Projects, I believe, at the last last year.
Okay. So I would need a motion to appro- so what what is our? We got a bunch of numbers here, what's what's the total that we're voting to approve, so. I know it's in the budget.
Okay, for the materials, it would be one point one zero seven six nine four.
Okay.
One million one hundred seven thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars for the materials.
Okay, so I would need a motion to approve the Musco um vote for one, for the amount that Mr. Shores stated, so. So do I have a motion? Oh, Director, yeah, Director's recommendation, sorry.
No worries, I recommend the number, the amount that Mr. Shores threw the?
All right.
Musco.
All right. So uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, it's gonna be so pretty.
Ms. Hodges?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cordell, any discussion, questions for Mr. Shores?
I have a question. I know that they're a Sourcewell supplier, but that kind of amount, why would you not send that out to bid? I mean, we showed that when we had to send our bleachers out for bid, that we got better pricing.
Ultimately, we we decided that the direction to go, the the feel was that Musco lighting was the better quality or the best quality uh for lighting, and we wanted to go that direction. If we put it out to bid, we're actually looking at getting it straight from the company and 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 it's just discussed to go with our cooperative, and that's that's really the only answer I have for you, Mr. Coon.
Uh, the, in the Capitol Projects, when we discussed it, it was, Musco was, we really have stuck with Musco lighting over the years.
And and over the years?
We have pieces, parts, relationships, contacts, accounts, things of that nature.
Over the, over the past, well, the past couple of years, when I've been checking on things, it just keeps coming back to Musco being the 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 better lighting, but I don't know if that's what you're really asking, but but that's the reason why we wanna make sure we were able to go with the Musco lighting.
No, I mean, I was just asking, you know, why wouldn't put out the bid and say what what other bids we got and if they would come off that any, because like I said, when we, when we had to put the the bleachers back out for bid, we saved some money on on that, it's still the same company that got it, but we saved money on what they come back with because they knew that they had competition. I mean, I've been around bidding for quite a bit, if 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 you go in and you don't have any competition, you know, you bid, you bid one level, if you know you're going in and you got competition, then you sharpen your pencil, so to speak.
And I I do, I understand what you're saying, and yes, we possibly could have gotten it a little bit cheaper, that is true. Uh, with the cooperative purchasing, they had to turn in a bid, and ultimately, they won that bid through that company, so the, through the Sourcewell, so that's the reason why it should be lower, but it's, there are some things that you do get charged for with uh by using a cooperative, because the cooperative's gonna make some some funds as well. It's just, other than just decided to go with the Sourcewell, that that's really the answer I have for you.
Okay, well, I mean, I was just bringing it up, trying to be a, you know, a good steward of our tax dollars and you know, that's one point one million, that's a, that's a lot of money.
It's a whole lot of money.
Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Shores? All right. Uh, we are voting on the Musco um bid for roughly one point one oh seven million dollars?
One, one million one hundred and seven thousand six hundred and ninety-four.
Okay, so.
That's not including the labor though, correct?
The labor is what you just got through.
Right, both of them together, what would both of them together be?
Both together is one, one million five hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars. That's where I was saying, the eight fifty-five thou- we're over, we're we're under fifty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars, but then I forgot about the the forty-two thousand, so wherever I added those together, you're looking at your ninety-seven thousand that was not put aside with that one point five.
So that our people out in YouTube link can understand, that's, you know, that's a lot of money so that they understand that one of them is not, one of them's gotta go with the other one, is the point I'm trying to make.
If you do one, you gotta do the other, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, but it's two bids that that we're having to go through, we said it's not, it's not just the one point little over one million, it's the other insta- installation that's gonna, that we've gotta pay for too, it's gonna be almost one point five million dollars.
Thanks for the clarification.
And every, it it covers every one of our fields, and you know, we're also gonna get a lot more economical here going with these LED lightings.
One thing I did leave off, we should be getting, we we have also applied for a TVA grant to take care of, it could be up to a hundred thousand dollars on going towards this as well for savings. So actually, when you look at that, it's gonna be helpful as well.
Would uh, was there ever an energy study done to say what we would be saving roughly yearly by switching to the LEDs versus what we've currently got?
We have not done a uh energy savings. Um, I I know that, in in talking to different ones, the energy savings, a lot of people wanna use that as the selling point to using LEDs. Yes, it's gonna give us a savings, there's no doubt, but is it gonna be a massive amount? Probably not, if you leave them on for a long period of time, I'm sure that it's gonna give us that much more savings the more time that's, you know, more that's used. Uh, right now, one of the things that's gonna help us save on is is getting the ones that we have fixed on a regular basis and repaired. And and we shouldn't, these these have very good warranties. Um, and I I can't just spout it off, I apologize, but new poles and new everything, I think it's twenty-five year warranty. Uh, I could be saying that wrong, don't hold me to it, but they are very, very good warranties on on these lights. Yes, twenty-five, twenty-five year warranty on new, ten year warranty on retrofit.
We're basically talking not just the ability to see the games better, but it's, this is a safety issue too for our kids out there playing.
I would say yes.
We're underlighted at the, uh, the football stadium's underlighted. They had, the poles were way far back from the field versus the lighting that was put on them. And then half of those won't work, the, and the fixtures are not rebuildable.
And a lot of our sports can take place after after dusk, so.
And that's one thing we're hoping to take care of, the soccer at the middle school.
You've got other issues like that, and that I'm not even gonna say the title number.
This, this is just, it's it's a good thing for our students, not athletes, in our schools.
I went to a football game at Warren County a few weeks ago, and they had their lighting set up to when they got a touchdown, it went crazy. I know it sounds small, but what that did to the crowd was huge, they loved it.
That's their.
Yeah, they went nuts, and it was, it was fun, even though it wasn't our touchdown, to sit there and be a part of it just because it it amped it up that much more, so I'm looking forward to us having some nice lights like that.
That is if the the boosters decide, or the?
Hey, booster.
And and I've got a feeling, there're a good, good chance they're gonna wanna build that.
It was just really fun.
I think it was gonna cost each field roughly close to eight thousand.
Well, here it is, uh, for, for the football field, it's nineteen-nine, so basically twenty.
Uh, they're out on that because at that time, he was talking about it, it was uh eighty-one, eighty-one hundred dollars to the clubs for just, for the controller to make it do it, that the lights were already set up. The lights were already set up everywhere, you just needed the controller that went in that connect music and sound to drivers that dri- drove the lights.
I think this is an extra for the, I think it's actually a different fixture. I think, I'm pretty sure, but you might be right on that, I I.
All right, further questions? I guess we can vote, then, Ms. Hinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine to zero. Okay, next up, we have the policy one point eight zero six, the revision, and uh, Mr. Hargrove?
Uh, yes, sir, as many of you know, I'm proud to call myself a veteran. Uh, I'm not so sure whether I was as good for the army as the army was for me, but I take a lot of pride and uh I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve in our armed forces. Um, I'm also honored and 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 we are all very blessed to live in the country that we do. It flies um our flag, I think it's important, we teach our children, uh, there's a, there's something bigger than our individual wants and needs, and it's what we do and the sacrifices we make for the whole. Um, there is a policy in Tipton County, Tennessee that talks about the flags that we want flown in our classrooms, the American flag as well as the Tennessee flag. I would love, I'm recommending that we adopt that policy, there's a copy of it, of the uh Tipton County portion into our policy, creating into our policy. I I believe there's some other flags, flags of our military uh would be part of that as well as um some other countries' flags if there was a connection to the learning that was taking place. But I think it's important that we we honor our country and those who've that created it and fought and died for the freedoms that we have, and I've been in nearly every one of our classrooms, middle school down, I need to go to some more in our high school, maybe a few in our middle school, but I I'd like to see an American flag and a Tennessee state flag in all our classrooms. We owe it to those that came before us.
Okay, so.
Yes.
I would need a motion to approve the revision to policy one point eight oh six, and note that this is a first and final, um, we normally do. is a first and final. Um, we normally do two readings, but this will be a first and final. Um, and that would be what the motion would be. So do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Hanser and Mr. Cordell, any discussion or questions?
Um, are we going to, for the classrooms that don't have the American flag and the Tennessee flag, are we gonna be able to purchase those for the classrooms? Okay.
I see on line fifteen and sixteen, it's referring to Tipton County Schools campuses. Shouldn't that be Coffee County Schools?
I think it's the, what's in red is what we're-
Yeah, but right here it says Tipton.
Yeah.
That need to change to Coffee.
Yeah. Everything, everything under flag display in the, from here on down should be struck and replaced with the red, I think. So I think that's how that is supposed to work, right, Melissa?
Oh, okay. Lines one through, okay. Right. Okay, I see. It's, it's, it's correct because you're, you're deleting all that others.
Yeah, we should've struck that out, you know, replaced it with the red. So. Is that correct, Melissa?
I have a question. Um, so this talks about flags, but it doesn't address other things that could go up, posters, signs, et cetera. Do we have any policy on that? Or we want any policy on that? Or I'm just saying, you know, like technically a flag, you know, like-
The policy that's on the, the 1.806 is advertising and distribution of materials in school. So that kinda goes over more than just flag. That's our current policy. What's in red would be what we would be adding to the current policy.
What line is that?
Well.
What line?
No, it's our policy.
Oh, oh, oh.
1.806.
And I believe line twelve refers to, uh, the principal's-
Shell screen all materials prior to distribution.
So when you say materials, that should cover, okay.
I think it's a great idea. I love it. I've seen too many videos of schools taking flags down. So I love that we're doing something like this.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to say that, um, a couple of weeks ago, when there was the active shooter incident in Minnesota, I noticed many of our schools were flying at half-mast and really appreciate that.
Yes.
So I know, you know, people look and watch for that as a sign of respect. And I saw all of our schools honoring that and really appreciate that.
It's not something I think to notice. I'll, I'll be looking.
And I like that number two, where it says any other flags included, but not limited to political, cultural or personal flags are prohibited. And I think that's something we need included to make sure that all students and personnel realize that, that that's not our policy to have that in the classroom, other than the American flag and the Tennessee flag.
And getting back to what Holly was talking about, I think that probably, you know, this will get passed, but we'll probably need to look at maybe some, going back and revisiting policy and tightening that up a little bit. So.
Or do y'all have?
I know we're, we're kinda going against what Robert was talking about earlier, bouncing it back to the policy committee.
Did they not have policy on 1.806?
It's at the top.
They have 1.806.
And it, and red on the back.
The red is what we're adding to our current policy.
Right. Because line, uh, uh, just like they were saying about the others, I mean, it says in here that other signs, politicals, literature shall not be distributed in our current policy, all that kinda stuff. It's in our current policy.
So we may not need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, what, what you're looking at here is the, what's on everybody's computer screen is adding the red.
Right.
Adding to our current policy, what's in red. And it's all at the end.
And this is particularly concerning flags. So that's why it's separate.
Yeah, you have, but our, our policy is more, covers more territory than just flags.
Which is fine, which is great. But this is saying that, you know, flags for sure-
Model is above the red.
Right. And that, that's the bit, yes.
What the red is.
So all this is coming out.
That's Tipton County. That's what's gonna go in as far as.
So, so you're marking out our 1.806 completely?
No.
Okay. Right, right. Okay.
Top of page two.
I just wanted to make sure I said it right.
Model, this is our, our current policy. This is a Tipton model.
Yeah.
This is our model that we're, we're going-
Just putting the red at the end.
Which goes back to the reason why Ms. Jones, that says Tipton, but it's down near the bottom.
Apologize for that.
Okay. So at this point, uh, we have a motion to, um, adopt the, the changes that are in red on this policy.
As a first and final.
As a first and final, yes. So, um, any further discussion? Otherwise, uh, Mr. Hanser?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. All right. Now we move into the most exciting part of the evening is April showtime with the budget amendments.
So sorry, there's so many. Um, let me go ahead and start. Okay?
Yeah, go, um, yeah. Well, what we'll try to do is, I mean, since we've discussed most of these things are related, if you can just interrupt, we'll try to move through here so we can get through them without, you know, I mean, unless people have questions, you know, we'll try to bang through these things.
This first, the, uh, 141, 2026, three is for the Raptor system that you guys approved earlier. It is for the full amount. Um, that, that would include central office because I didn't know which way the vote was gonna go. I did, wanted to make sure I included the full, full amount. So, um, the hit to fund balance for this grant, for this, um, part, partly paid by the grant for eighty-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. And then forty-eight thousand, if you would've went with a higher bid, would've come from fund balance. So that amount will change. We won't use the full amount. So whatever we don't use, we'll go back to fund balance when we close out the school year. Um, so that, that's what budget amendment number three is for.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve budget amendment 141 dash 2026 dash three.
So move.
Mr. Coon and who's second?
I'll second.
Mr. Gillie? Okay. Any discussion on this? And, uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Next up is budget amendment four.
141, 2026, four. This is a grant that, uh, Mr. Westmoreland received, um, for a retention, stop-in for school psychologists. So this is a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, um, to pay out in a, a stop-in for our school psychologist, um, in the next two years, two years. So that's what four is.
Okay. So I need a, a motion to approve, uh, budget amendment 141 dash 2026 dash four.
So move.
Ms. Jones?
I'll second.
Ms. Yinch? Any discussion? All right. Um, let's see. Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
And Ms. Jones?
Aye.
I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Okay. Next up, budget amendment five.
141, 2026, five. So when I reported to the state, um, at the end of the school year, for this last school year, they did not like where I classified after-school program. So this is just to move our after-school program from one part of the budget to another part of the budget where they recommended. So this is just a reclassification of our, of our, um, after-school program.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve 141 dash 2026 dash five.
I so move.
Mr. Cordell, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon? Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Okay. Budget amendment six.
141, 2026, six. So this is the remaining part of our, um, TISA outcome bonus that we got from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So we spent a little of that in the last school year. We had two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars left of that. As a supervisor's group, we met, um, numerous times. We also met with principals to figure out what was the best plan to move forward for, to use these funds. Um, the State Department encouraged us to use the funds for instructional, to improve our scores, to do some tutoring. So they gave us some kind of, um, leadway on how to proceed. And so if you look at the bottom of the budget amendment, um, this is to bring the money from, that we restricted from the last school year that we didn't spend, um, to bring it into our budget to start working in some of the areas below. Um, so we want to improve our, um, math and ACT scores. So we're doing some after-school tutoring for, um, at the high school. Um, a few of our schools are part of the NIT grant. Um, so we want to, um, do some more, I guess, work in the other schools. So we're gonna offer some different professional development, some substitutes for those people who are going to the NIT professional development and do some secondary summer planning. Um, the mastery prep program at the middle school that's helped them, um, do benchmark testing. We're gonna purchase that program for them for another year. Um, letters training, um, school counselor conferences. We're gonna update our, um, standard alignments, our, what we call moodle for our curriculum. We're gonna update those. We're gonna pay some stop-ins for our employees to do that. We're gonna buy some materials for elementary, um, for wonders and foundations. We're gonna buy some software, um, a video library for NIT, NIET program, translative software, credit recovery software, E L, E L, ESL software. Um, we're gonna do some unit planning, professional development. We're gonna pay for some, uh, industrial certs for CTE program. Um, we're gonna do some ACT professional development training with our people. Um, and then we put some extra funding in here for future, um, professional development. It's a, it's just a lump sum that we can pull out and use if we, um, feel the need that there's, um, something out there that will benefit our employees. And then, um, we are gonna purchase some ESL reading enrichment materials. So this is the, you may see one later in the year if I need to move some of this funding around, but this is kind of where we're gonna start for this school year and, um, some ideas that came from supervisors and principals on good use for this funding.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve budget amendment, uh, 141 dash 2026 dash three.
And can I say it's restricted funds? I'm pulling it out of our restricted fund balance
Okay.
And bringing it into the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
So do I have a motion?
I so move.
Okay. Ms. Yinch?
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones seconds. Any discussion?
I just have a, I just have a, um, statement. I think that's wonderful that, that you, y'all have decided to put that amount in, in service and staff development. And that's for the entire system, that the needs of anyone, isn't it? To see that there's money available for teachers to, uh, maybe go to conferences and attend things that, that in relation to what they're teaching in the classroom.
Yeah, we, we were just talking about that. Um, me and Ms. Cole, the last couple of days about it's wonderful that we have this so we can, if there's something that comes available, we have money funding for it. So.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Okay. Budget amendment seven.
141.
We're getting through these.
2026, seven. This is a budget amendment for the extra pay that you approved earlier in the bud, uh, early in the meeting. And, um, this will affect fund balance and that, um, is on the back sheet if you wanna look at that.
Okay. I need a motion to approve budget amendment 141 dash 2026 dash seven.
I so move.
Mr. Cordell?
I'll second.
Mr. Coon? Okay. Any discussion? We kinda hammered this earlier in the meeting, but any questions? Okay. Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
And Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Okay. Budget amendment eight.
141, 2026, eight. It's for two grant, two state grants that we, um, the first one is a state special ed grant that we've gotten the last three school years. So that's something we've received and we'll need to bring the revenue in along with the expenditures. And this, that grant has been approved by the State Department already. This is just a budget formality. And then, um, the innovative, innovative school models grant is a CTE grant that we've received for the last two years. This is the third year of it. So this is his carryover and this will be the last year of that grant for Mr. Skipper. So this is to bring over the remaining funds, um, into our budget so that he can use those. And then that, that budget has also been approved by the State Department. This is just to bring it into the budget.
Okay. I need a motion to approve budget amendment 141 dash 2026 dash eight.
So move.
Mr. Hanser, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell? Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, I know you said this is the last year that CTE grant, um, so the regular school funds will have to take this up.
Well, he, he was strategic about what he did. And so we were able to supplement some salaries to build his, um, local fund so he can buy equipment later when this grant goes away. He's also bought some, um, used it to build the, um, CTE building at the high school, um, and bought some pieces of equipment at the middle school and Raider Academy.
I, I was just looking at the teacher line of ninety-seven thousand. Will we have to take that up?
So those are already teachers that we have on staff and they were on staff before the grant.
So they're paid out of general school anyway?
They will, they were already paid before we got the grant. We were just able to use the grant funds to pay for those teachers for a few years.
So we'll have to go back to that. Okay.
Further question?
Maybe he'll get another one.
Well, there's talk of another one, but we don't know for certain yet.
Any other further questions? Okay. Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Hey, look at that. We're down to the last budget amendment. And it's a big one.
Mm-hmm. 141, 2026, nine. This is for the lighting that you guys approved earlier. This is, will take care of most of what you voted for, for the lights and the construction part of it. We will have to dip into capital a little bit for the additional, but the, it's already in the capital budget right now. So we'll be able to, once this is brought in, we'll be able to write those purchase orders for the thank you budget.
We're gonna be okay with that and the bleachers as well. And the bleachers in that same, what we-
So the bleachers were last school year. So they were part of last school year's budget. So that's already been allotted for.
Right.
So it won't have anything to do with this.
Thank you.
Okay. So I need a, a motion to approve, uh, budget amendment 141 dash 2026 dash nine.
I so move.
Mr. Cordell, second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Yinch? Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gillie?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. That passes nine to zero. Okay. We got through all those budget amendments. Now we have budget, uh, budget update final, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So this is, I've closed the school year. The twenty-four, twenty-five school year is officially closed as of last week. Um, this is the report that, well, the auditors will, will work from, not this report, but these are the numbers that we will get audited This is the report that, well, the auditors will, will work from, not this report, but these are the numbers that we will get audited on. We finished the school year, revenue at fifty-three million, eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two, which was a hundred point six eight percent of our budget, so we're a little over where we were at at the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The main, the main increase there was our sales, was sales tax increase and then our TESA, our TESA allotment was higher than the previous school year. Expenditures, we finished the school year at fifty-one million, eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, which was ninety-one point nine, nine six percent of budget. Compared to year-to-date of twenty-three, twenty-four of eighty-five point two six. We weren't, we did add two million dollars to our fund balance. Most of that went to unassigned, a good, a little portion of that went to our assigned fund balance. Overall, feel good about how we ended the school year and add to fund balance and feel like we've done some work tonight to do some things to help reduce that, but this will be the audit report that auditors will look at, so if you have any other questions about this report, I'll take those.
So I need a motion to approve the Budget Update Final twenty-four, twenty-five.
I so move.
Ms. Yinch, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hensher, any questions or discussion?
I guess the only thing that popped out at me was the federal government revenues where it says year-to-date we've received three hundred and three percent as opposed to ninety-six.
So.
Last year.
Um, so we had, I think, a partial year of ROTC, let's look back and see.
Four, seven, zero.
That's where we get our, our ROTC revenue from, let me look at that area real fast. Okay, so I, so last year what happened was, that is the area we report our, like ROTC revenue, so the US Air Force reimburses for half the salaries for our two instructors. But last year the State Department made us reclass some of our ISN revenue to a federal one, and we didn't have that in the budget. So we had, I think, four hundred thousand dollars of what should have been counted as state dollars, they made us reclassify that to federal. And so when I did that, it wasn't in the budget and it made that three hundred and three percent look high, and it was, it shouldn't have been that. So that was just an audit reclassification last year.
So a quick question, it's kind of not totally related to this, but what are the audit rules and stuff for moving unrestricted fund balance to restricted?
So, if I'm not like moving a, like.
If we had a program we wanted to fund down the road or designate over a period of time and you were looking at moving, using unrestricted fund balance but setting that aside for future years? How do you, what's the process to move that to restricted?
So, it would just be a new restrictive fund, so like this year, twenty-four, twenty-five year, I set up a new restrictive fund for the TESA outcome bonus, cause it was allowed by the State Department. For like, so like a grant can be done that way. With Mr. Hargrove's approval, I can do any kind of restricted or assigned fund. Doesn't necessarily have to come to the board, but it can be with him. But then when we use the funds, it has to come to you guys to be voted to use in that manner.
Right.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and then goes back to the county to, yeah, for, yeah, okay.
So he can, he can, if we choose to go that path, we can set up a, another fund and, and move money, like if we budget that money, that money can be moved into that fund and restricted for that purpose.
So just looking for clarity, when we look on the Budget Amendments, it's got basically one lump sum for restricted fund balance, but that's made up of a whole series of sub-accounts that are all separate accounts.
So any of your grants that you don't spend, that can roll over? Any areas that the State Department says we can restrict, so like capital, maintenance, transportation, CTE area, and then there's a few assigned places, like old things that are in there we need to clean up, but mainly he can, if he agrees, he approves it, we can set up a new assigned. If it doesn't come from the State Department, he can, we can set up a new assigned fund based on his recommendation.
Okay, that, that is, you know, just looking for some clarity on that, how that works, so. I know sometimes that, you know, the auditors and stuff for non, you know, for schools and stuff, it can be kind of arcane.
So once those assigned funds and restrictive funds get audited, I can definitely provide you guys a list of the balances and what the funds are.
Right, good, all right, thank you. Any further questions for April on the Budget Amendment or Budget Update? All right, so let's see, where were we, Ms. Yinch, I think?
Aye.
Mr. Hensher.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Uh.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Yeah.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine two zero. Okay, now we go on to our Budget Update for this year.
Yes, so this is the Budget Update for July, there's not a whole lot going on. Because we haven't ran payroll and we haven't really had a whole lot of revenue. We did receive the teacher bonus money, which I think you guys approved at last meeting, the seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that you see online, forty-six, five hundred. We did receive that in July. And then we did have in forty-four, five hundred, there were the Project Raise Grant and a couple FRC grants that we received. So that's why that line is at a hundred and two percent, because we weren't expecting to get those grants and we got those, so those will makes those numbers look a little inflated, so year-to-date, we've received one point five percent of revenue compared to last year date of point, negative point zero five percent. So a little more in July than we usually get. And then expenditures, we spent one point five million dollars of the budget, which is two point nine four percent of, of used. And then last year we're year-to-date of three point four three percent. And the major item that we've spent, the items that we've spent for this school year so far, we bought some textbooks, which is in line seven one one zero zero, so a large expenditure there. And then we paid all of our work comp and property insurance, which is in line seven two three one zero. And then in seven two six one zero, we bought some supplies for the schools and paid our utilities for the first month, so those are our three largest areas that we've had expenditures for so far in July. So far the budget's on track.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the first Budget Update for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
So move, second.
Mr. Hensher, Mr. Cordell. Okay, any discussion or questions for April on this one? Nope, everybody's ready to be done. All right, who's I, Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Uh.
Mr. Gillie.
Uh.
Mr. Cordell.
Uh.
Ms. Yinch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensher.
Uh.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine two zero, so that includes our, concludes our agenda items. Thanks for your patience, so now we have items for discussion, so we're getting to the, we're getting to you guys here shortly. I promise. So, this opportunity for board members, so Mr. Coon?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Ms. Matthews?
I don't have anything.
Okay, how's golf going?
It's going, it's intense, and it's a lot of fun.
I know you've been running rags.
I have been, I'm glad to be here tonight, glad to be back.
Ms. Hodge.
I always have something I think of to say.
Sure.
I was thinking earlier about how September next year, this board has the potential to be very different. So that being said, I'm looking forward to working with all of you for at least one more year and I think we make a really great team. And this past three years has gone by very quickly, I imagine this one will as well, but thankful to be here and looking forward to what we do this year.
All right.
I want, I want to thank you too for getting the New Union Campus mode, that, that looks much better where that pond, that area was. It's all weeded and mowed and it looks really good. And also, I want all of us to keep in mind that we've spent a lot of money today and that I do think that metal detectors are the next step some way or another in our safety plan, because that would just make me feel better as a grandparent, board member, that at least we've got another layer of protection of keeping guns out of our schools or any kind of weapon. So just hopefully we can come up with some funding for that.
So, who's on the Safety Committee again? You're not on the Safety Committee. Mr. Hensher?
I'd like to thank Mr. Hargrove and our board for this flag thing. I think it's very important that we show our patriotism and the things that we're doing with this is gonna by far outdo what we think that's more than, than, more than what we're doing here. And I think it was a great thing tonight and I appreciate the board, everybody for, for looking into that. And I think it's gonna make a lot of parents specifically very happy with this. And I think they're, I know of a lot that's gonna be very happy and appreciative of what we've done.
Ms. Yinch?
Well, since we met, I got to go to Hickerson for breakfast, I was invited and they gave me the cutest little tour guide, she was five years old, named Melissa, and that was great, I really appreciated that. And I got to go to New Union and they fed a supper and we got to sit with the teachers and I appreciated how many of the teachers came up and thanked us for what we did, that was, that was a blessing. And so I just love to see what Ms. Gillie is doing with that school and she's, and the general reaction of the teachers to what's taking place was very, very positive. And then I got to go to an art meeting with all of our art teachers, all of our band teachers, music, and we're planning, or they are planning a joint arts show this, this next year, and it should be absolutely fabulous, they're excited about putting it together. The high school will still, as I understand it, have their art show, but they'll also contribute to the overall Coffee County Art Show as well. So that's gonna be very exciting, so. And I don't know how many people have said, "Thank you for the art teachers, thank you for the art teachers." They are a big hit, so it's very appreciated.
Mr. Cordell?
I think it was mentioned the other night that we could probably use three more art teachers.
Yeah, it was mentioned.
And I had the honor of going last Thursday and also to New Union, and it was a great meeting. Enjoyed fellowshipping and interacting with the staff, teachers and whatever, and it was a, and a great supper.
It was a great supper.
It was good, and desserts, oh my goodness. And, but I just wanna thank you for this team and the way we've knit together and for what you're doing for our county. And thank you, Kevin, for all the work you did in the lighting or whatever, and Mr. Hargrove, thank you, what a, what a team, thank you, Lord.
Mr. Gillie?
I think I'm good, sir.
Okay, well, I guess I'll, I'll bring it home and I, I also went to New Union and I really appreciate the stuff that Ms. Gillie's doing out there. The thing I heard from teachers is that the discipline in the classrooms has improved markedly since she's been there and they really appreciate that, so that was probably the number one thing I heard, but, so, and she's got the rules right there on the wall, you know, number one is, yes, sir, yes, ma'am, rule number one. So, you know, I, I appreciate that and, you know, it's, it's making a difference, so I'm looking forward to what happens over there. We do have a, a, our fall retreat is coming up, September twenty-third, we got a pretty full agenda. Mr. Warland, Mr. Westmoreland is going to give us the rundown on the SPED program, which we really, you know, have not, it's kind of a black box sometimes, so I'm looking forward to hearing about that and we're gonna see what's going on with our test scores, so we got a lot of things we're gonna talk about, Mr. Hargrove will get the strategic plan out to you, cause we're gonna work on that too, and so it's gonna be, you know, once again, a pretty full day and lots of stuff to do, so. But I, you know, and I, in wrapping up, I have to agree with Jennifer, we got, you know, the next year with this team and I think it's a fantastic team, I, you know, I brag on, on this board all the time and we can do a lot in the next twelve months and really lay, lay a lot of foundation and, you know, ultimately it's all about the kids' educational outcomes and that's what we're here for, so, so I'm, I'm looking forward to everything we can do, so. All right, so with that, any committee reports? All right, so you guys are finally on, thanks for staying away this long.
Good afternoon.
And before you can go and kind of introduce yourself and, and, you know, what, what your, you know, what your area of emphasis is and what you hope to do, you know, so.
My name is Christiane. My CTE course is engineering at my school, I'm very involved in the student body overall. Part of SGA and a total of eighteen extracurriculars at my school. We're gonna be touching bases on a lot of sports stuff, talking a little bit more about the expo night that Principal Paul Parsley had mentioned before and some things that SGA also has. To start us off, our girls soccer just took a trip to the Smoky Mountains and played in the tournament. I know it went somewhat well, they learned a lot and had an overall positive experience. They play tonight, actually it already started, probably already ended, playing Fayetteville at six. And they play Tuesday at Webb and Thursday with MTCS at six PM. And our volleyball team plays Tuesday with Lawrence at six PM and Thursday is also senior night. And they're playing at home versus Shelbyville at six.
All righty, I'm Jones Wagner, my CTE course is criminal justice and our golf team is playing at, on Wednesday at Bear Trace at nine AM. They've been doing well this season. Cross country, they're competing in Nuga at night in Chattanooga on Saturday, so we're hoping that goes well for them. Oh, they just held their first home meet for the season, it's their only one, and it was on coffee pot week and we had over five hundred racer, uh, people race. So that's pretty awesome. Football, it is homecoming week, so we're excited about that, we're playing against Franklin at seven PM and Homecoming Court will walk at halftime.
So I wanted to emphasize a little bit on the expo night that we have set up on September thirtieth at five thirty to seven thirty. It's more, the purpose is to show, a lot of businesses, they get brought up and they're like, people come into the store and it's like, can we get donations for either our organization or like for a raffle or any sort of stuff? But they don't really get to see exactly what is going on with the money that they donate, how is it being used? How is it actually affecting these students and their overall education? So our hope is to have, we already have like fifteen, I think, if not more, clubs and organizations that are gonna be a part of it. Displaying more specifically what does their club or organization do? I know Coffee County Beta, I'm the president for that club, we're gonna be talking about, well, we compete at state conference, we're gonna have some people talking about how it has affected them, placing at state conference, going to nationals, helping out in their community. And it's just overall a way to kind of inform the community of what we've been up to and just hoping to gain some more support from local businesses and our community. And then also, we just had a successful coffee pot week two weeks ago and now we're on to homecoming week.
Yes, so our homecoming theme is game on, so we have dress-up days. Monday, today was shoots and ladders, shoot down the ladder and dress as your younger self. So that's why I'm dressed a little funny today, but. Yes, so Tuesday tomorrow is guess who, so it's dressed as your favorite TV, movie, book character. So we'll be dressed up as a character tomorrow. Wednesday is connect four, so find a friend or four more and dress alike as twins or in a group costume. So we're gonna connect with our friends and do connect four. And then Thursday is the game of life, we're gonna dress as our future goals, so college, what you, your career field, whatever you want your future to look like, that's how you dress. And then Friday is battleship, because we're gonna be. And then Friday is Battleship because we're gonna be playing against Franklin and we want to show our school pride. So, the dance theme is the sweetest night. So it's gonna be kind of based off Candy Land and that's gonna wrap up our game on week. Tickets are on sale this week, Monday through Thursday, in a Red Raider Bank for eight dollars. That price will increase to ten dollars if you buy it at the door. Let's see, Mr. Parsley had mentioned, kind of like a carnival on Friday. So, for example, SGA will be hosting a talent show at twelve-thirty. There's gonna be a car show hosted by our science department, teacher versus student volleyball game at one-thirty. So we have very fun activities and that's just a few of many. This is our map. So we're very excited for that. We have students ecstatic, you know, the kids in the talent show, they're ready to show off their talents and so we're excited about that. And then our talent show judges are going to be Bill Nichols, Ansley Hall, and Andy Barnet. So we're very grateful for their participation and willingness to show up and be there for all the students.
And then finally, we just had one more thing. We did kind of get a lot of students contact us and they did want to bring us something to y'all. With this new policy that has been implemented with phones and personal electronic devices, there has seemed to be some complications when it comes to actually having access to some of the educational resources that they need. For example, I've had some people come up to me and talk about how they're doing dual enrollment and they need access to their MOLO. And something that's sort of affecting their education is that every single time they use a Chromebook instead of their personal laptops, they have to take maybe five, six minutes of just logging into their course, not even having access to, you know, the supplies that they need or whether or less their assignments. And they did want me to propose sort of like, phones, we completely understand, you know, they can be distracting. But just sort of a shift towards a personal laptop. It would make it so much more easier to find our own personal resources that we use for our education as alongside for dual enrollment people. It would just make their overall experience smoother and help overall speed up their education. And that's all we have for y'all today.
Yeah. And I will say, it does help while you're at school, you know, y'all do provide us with devices and we're very grateful for those. But when we go home, it's kind of like, you gotta, some people have iPads. So then you gotta switch and it's like, you gotta work your iPad compared to the school Chromebook and it's very different. And so switching back and forth, it's just sometimes, you know, a little bit confusing. And for lunch, so lunch, we have, you know, we get emails non-stop. One of the biggest things is check your email, you know. We're both in multiple clubs. We have advisors and they're always emailing us. We get emails from the counseling center non-stop. So one of the problems I've noticed this year is we keep getting emails, but we're in a lunch period where we don't have access to those Chromebooks. So maybe if we could, we understand it's state law for educational time, but maybe if we could, you know, think about lunch, you know, that's just a time where it's good for us to be able to check up on our emails, refresh. If we need to email a teacher about something, we're not taking that out of a different class period to email. You know, we kind of get to just catch up and do our routine to make sure we're informed and, you know.
And adding on to what he said, a little problem about not having access to a phone or any sort of personal device for that matter during these free times. Like it causes for me, I have to check my email during my beginning of my fifth period. I have to log in, check it, because that's the first time I have access to a device without having to go out of my way and grab something, like a Chromebook from a different class, just due to my personal schedule. So, I don't have access to be contacted in any way until fifth period. And by then, it has happened like twice this year already, where when I read the information that is needed, it's already too late. But these are just some things that we wanted to bring forward to you and we hope that you will take into consideration.
Thank you all for all you do. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much for making us aware of what you are experiencing and hopefully, we can find ways to revise that to be more beneficial to you guys. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
That was a very good pitch and things that I personally have not thought about. Being an old person, it sounds amazing to be out of touch, but I understand now that it does.
My daughter has a MacBook and she's going through the same challenges with seeing information too late and, and going home and trying to catch up and then not having the MacBook at school and, and being out of touch with no access to email also.
Yeah, we've had a lot of students just say like, "Oh, I bought a MacBook," or "I bought this computer." And then they didn't realize, they knew they couldn't have their phone, but they get to school and they didn't realize they couldn't have that and they're like, "Yeah, like I should, I could have saved that up for a car, saved that," you know.
Yeah, because they're very expensive.
That's something we, you know, we've had a lot as student government representatives and we represent our junior class. We have people that come to us and they're like, and we're like, you know, it's.
We'll try, yeah. Thank you, thank you, because that's, that's why you're here.
You're representing them very well.
Part of you being a student ambassador is to bring these issues to us. So we really appreciate it.
And it takes guts to stand up here and say that.
It really does.
It does, because y'all both did really, really well. And also, your homecoming sounds really fun. I feel like homecoming has really stepped up over the past twenty-something years.
Working hard and we are ready and we are, you know, every day.
It's an exciting time to be at the high school.
But it's a good season.
Do a lot of the students participate in the dress-up and all that? That's awesome.
Yeah, at our pep rallies, our last pep rally, we had a game and it involved the whole student body. And so, we've, that's our, one of our goals.
Also, something we introduced in SGA this year that we're gonna be continuing throughout all the years is that we are actually giving a plaque towards the homeroom with the most participation by percentage. So there's no bias in terms of like how many you have, if not, how many actually did. This year, it was Ms. Henley's homeroom that had won the plaque, but hopefully next year will be different and changing for that.
Yeah. Do y'all have any questions for us, like?
You did great. And the two of you spoke more than anyone has yet. The two of you might be my favorites. Good job. Thank you very much.
Really exhibited some leadership. So I'm really impressed. Thank you.
We have a scholarship to vote on.
That's right.
Your classmates should be very glad.
So you want to be memorable.
Well, thank y'all. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And I just have to check. You're not wearing bunny slippers, are you?
No, we can't see your legs. I would've just thought that was you. Do you have the picture of when you were little? Oh, we need to see that.
Oh, yeah. That's awesome.
All right. Director's report.
Christian and Jones, thank you. That was a hard act to follow and I'm gonna hit it quick. Fine Arts Night, our fine arts teachers throughout the system did meet at East Coffee a couple of Fridays ago. We're very blessed to have Ms. Yentch be a part of that meeting. Cranked them up, get out of the way, and they'll take off with it. We'll have another meeting in October. We are planning a spring Fine Arts Night for the whole school system. It'll be held at a middle school. We'll set that date in our October meeting. The high school will continue to have its Fine Arts Night, just as Ms. Yentch says. So I'm really excited about that. Parent-teacher conference night has come and gone and was a success. We appreciate all the parents that attended. Parent survey window has opened and will, will remain open through the end of September. The survey provides an opportunity to share their thoughts in the areas of our system's five-year plan and it also addresses Title I. We will continue to push that survey out because the data from that will be shared during our study session when we develop our five-year plan. So Holland does a great job with that. Speaking of Holland and social media, we will celebrate another teacher and non-certified employee in about a week or so, spotlight teacher and employee of the, of the month. Heard a lot of good positive feedback about the, the last recipients of that. School safety meeting, again, is September nineteenth. I initially invited everyone. It'll be first come, first served. And Tonya Garner will decide which one of y'all are gonna get. You're not doing that? Okay. But you can go tell her in the first four, get to ten. Athletics, the boys bomb that. We have homecoming this week. We got girls' soccer. We got golf. We've got football. We got it all. Cross-country, a lot of things going on. If you're a Red Raider fan, you have a ton of opportunities through the week to go support our kids. Coffee County Sheriff's Department is holding a fundraiser on October seventeenth at the Caw Center. Yep, that's the day of the Alabama-Tennessee game. And they are selling ribs and smoked sausage and all the proceeds. They're doing that at the Caw Center. All the proceeds go back to our students that are participating in Cadet Camp. So that's pretty neat, supporting that. Last but, last but not least, last week's South Central TSBA gathering. Mr. Cordell, you bumped up two levels. Congratulations. Thomas Ballard, our board chair, one level. And Mr. Gilli, one level. And I enjoyed the company of Mr. Coon and Mr. Hanser as well as Mr. Ballard. And that is your director's report for September.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Shores, you get to wrap up with, I feel like half the meeting was a Capitol Project's update, but dive in.
Okay, the window laminate is finishing up. If you've been to some of our schools, notice in the front of the schools, there's some glass areas. The vinyl has been added and it's adding to our schools. I think it looks really nice. Should be done within the next couple of weeks. They should be finishing up. Doors and hallway architectural engineering documents, those are finished. We will be going over those at our next safety committee meeting. They will, Ward will be sharing that information. The high school bleachers, the modifications will start next Monday. One week from today, they're supposed to be starting all those modifications. They did work with us so that we could get through our homecoming, as the student ambassador said. And so that, that was very nice of them in making it work. The high school chiller had to be, the coolant had to be flushed. That was done on the day that school, those students were there, or teachers, which was this last Friday. And that's pretty much everything that's going on. And I'm looking forward to getting these lights started and get those ordered and get the ball rolling with it. It's gonna be neat. It's gonna be really nice.
We've been working on the lights. It's been like three years, right?
Been about a year and a half.
A year and a half? Boy, it seems like longer to me. Maybe it just seems longer. All right, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cordell, second. Nobody wants to adjourn? Ms. Yentch, okay, everybody, second apply by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're out of here.